Welcome to the Fairfax Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, April 18th. I'm going to call our meeting to order here. Joanne, can we do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Cumber.
Here.
Commissioner S. Barstow.
Here.
Commissioner Cumber.
Here.
Commissioner Pielan.
Here.
Commissioner Catcher.
Here.
Vice Chair Lamont.
Here.
And Chair Hammond is absent.
So we have a couple of public hearing items and a consent item. And I'm just going to quickly read the meeting protocol out loud.
Actually, Madam Chair, before you go there, you're going to approve the agenda, I believe.
Oh.
And may I make a comment on that?
Please.
I would recommend you just move the Planning Director's report down after Commissioner comments or requests. There's no reason for it to become before five and six.
Okay. So we're at the approval of agenda with the request that we move Planning Director's report to before Commissioner comments but after discussion items at the end. Does anyone have any comment on the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, I'm going to read the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. We're going to move to the public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here who has a public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we're going to move to consent. We've approved the agenda, so the consent item has passed or correct, is approved. So if you're here for 12 vistas away, you have been approved. So we're going to move on to public hearing items. Application 13-1, 17 Woodland Road. Linda, if you could apprise us.
Yep. The applicants are proposing to remodel and expand the single-family residence, including excavation, improvement, and conversion of a basement area into an art studio and a half bathroom. The addition and remodel will bring the living space square footage of the house to 1,646 square feet. The project requires the approval of a hill-area residential development permit because the parcel doesn't meet the minimum size and width requirements based on the average slope. However, the project does comply with all the setback regulations, height limitations, floor area ratio requirements, and lot coverage limitations. The project also requires an excavation permit because construction will require the excavation and fill of 135 cubic yards of material. And it also requires a parking variance because while the project will increase the number of parking spaces on the site to the required three, they are requesting an exception to not provide the required covered parking space. And the project requires design review because it is a 50% remodel. Disturbance of the site will be limited to the areas where the driveway will be widened and where the foundation for the new addition will be constructed, so site disturbance has been minimized. No trees are being removed as a direct result of the project, but the vegetative management plan that is required by the fire code is going to require the removal of 53 trees, but it's a heavily wooded site and 97 trees will remain after the construction and the implementation of the vegetative management plan. And we're recommending that you approve application 13-01 based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the conditions in the staff report as well. And that would conclude our report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any commissioners who have questions for staff at this point?
So I just wanted to confirm, I did look it up. So this is an upslope lot on a steeper hill, but based on the town code, covered parking is not required if it's a steep hill and you're a downslope lot, but not an upslope lot.
Correct.
I know we've also gone through the wildland/urban interface, and I know the fire department has a lot of concern over the fire conditions. And I'm wondering if there's been any consideration. I know the requirement is to have covered parking, but in this situation, it would be a second structure. And is there any additional effect tied to wildfire or fire risk by having an additional structure at that site?
You know, I've never, I'm sure there is an added risk, but the fire department, they don't base it on the number of structures. They just require that you have a certain distance maintained around the structures.
But in terms of the flammability of the structure, having a second structure immediately adjacent to the existing structure but separate, would this require, like, fire sprinklers? I mean, I guess that's the kind of the question of, you know, we've had garages that have had or sheds that are over 200 square feet.
So far, they haven't required sprinklers in carports.
And even a car deck.
Yeah.
You're creating an area that you could have additional flammability, I guess, is...
They haven't required it for carports yet, but they have required it for garages, so that is a possibility. And we did include a condition that they review the final set of plans, and so if they do have any additional conditions, they'll implement them at the building permit stage.
Okay. Because I'm just thinking back to our, you know, the town code. The town code is clear, and then we're in the middle of, we've approved the town plan, and we're in the middle of looking at these zoning ordinances. And I think some of these on-hill slopes and garages and wildland/urban interface and second structures never really came up. And I guess that's kind of an, seems like an open question that we might have.
You might ask the building official if he's ever...
Yeah, the fire department considers any structure as additional fuel load.
Right.
So they consider it as impacting the property and making it more dangerous, the more combustible material that you have.
So I'm...
If it was a garage, they would require it to be sprinkled.
Right. And this is a separate, it's separate from the structure. There's no, the site wouldn't allow it for it to be tied to the structure. So this really is a second structure that would be on that property. And I guess we've talked about the regulations and wildland/urban interface, but we haven't really kind of had a site where the two things come together, where the code requires creation of an additional structure, even though it's not being requested. But we haven't looked at the effect of how does that affect the fire flammability of the site. So we've had garages where the question's been about view shed and effect on the view shed, but we haven't had a sort of a requirement that's pushing to add a structure in a highly flammable area.
Yeah. A carport, though, could be made out of pretty flame-resistant materials, you know, metal and things. So I don't know, you know, if that's something that you wanted answered now, you could continue it and ask the fire department to weigh in before you take action. But I think they would say that the structure could be designed out of materials that wouldn't, you know, that would combat that or counteract it. Does anyone else have a question for staff on this project? So at this point, we are going to ask the applicant or his representatives, or their representatives, to come and speak on behalf of the project.
There we go. Rich Reston from Reston Charituck Architects. The original house was built in 1942, and it was our intention to leave the existing structure and pretty much the existing character of the house intact, but remodel the entire house so that it was upgraded and brought into a more modern style inside. We did that, we expanded the house on the upper floor, the living room. The area that you see on the floor plan in green is the existing covered porch, which we're expanding out onto. And then we're expanding another three feet that you see in blue there to create the new large living space on the upper floor. We're also taking the two bedrooms and bath on the upper floor and making it into one master bedroom suite. The existing porch on the north side, which is the upper side of the floor plan, remains on that side. On the lower floor, we're taking the room and laundry room on the downstairs, expanding it out as well, and creating a large art studio with a half bath. Also on that level is a deck. The exterior of the building, the original house and its detailing remains pretty much the way that it is now, except the windows are all redone. But the area that's new, we did in a contrasting color and material, that cement plaster. And then, of course, the, that's to give interest to the elevations, and the deck as well gives interest and breaks up the scale of the building. In terms of site work, we hadn't intended to do anything, but the town engineer is requiring a new concrete apron. That area that you see on the site plan in gray is the concrete apron at the roadway as well as concrete paving up the sloping portion of the driveway. And then there's required retaining walls on both sides of that driveway to stabilize the soil on both sides. All the conditions of the, conditions of approval are acceptable with the one exception that we'd prefer not to build a carport. And this is largely because it's detrimental to the view from the building. But also, I don't understand the rationale of needing a covered parking space in this case. I would assume that the reason that the ordinance was in effect before was a visual one. But if you look at other houses in the neighborhood, and I have some photographs of upslope lots, when you drive by, you can't really, you don't really notice the parking. I mean, it's really, it's on the uphill side, you're close up to it, so the cars sort of disappear. Here's a couple of shots of a couple of houses on Woodland, lower down on Woodland. So this house has had this condition for many years. The owner would prefer not to do covered parking, so we'd like to ask for a variance for a covered parking. We think the conditions on the side are such that it justifies no covered parking.
Thank you. Is that it for the applicant's discussion? Does anybody have a question for the applicant at this time? The commission?
I just want to confirm, because you said they were all acceptable, so the deed restriction on the preventing the second unit because they're separate elevations without internal connection, that's acceptable?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
The deed restriction for not a second unit?
Deed restriction, yeah. There's no intent to make a second unit out of it.
So that's acceptable. I just want to double confirm that. Thanks.
Anyone else have a question for architect?
One question I had, I noticed on the original plans, the area where it's going to be used for the art studio, there was kind of a utility area, the washer and dryer and that type of thing. And I didn't notice where that was being relocated in the new plan.
The washer dryer was moved upstairs. It's in the bathroom.
Okay. I just, I didn't notice it, so I just wanted to see where that was going.
On your plan, you see it right in here, W right there for washer dryer.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. So at this point, if there's anyone in the public who'd like to speak on this project, come forward, state your name and address, and take the podium.
Yes, I'm Michael Sturdivan. I live at 82 Pine Drive and Woodland's just up above me. And I've built two houses in this neighborhood in the last 20-some years, and I've always had a hard set of rules laid upon me as to what I had to do, and I always ended up doing exactly what had to be done. And the one thing about waiving the carport, is that a condition, is that a rule that goes with this sort of development? Apparently it is, and the client, and the people are asking for, you know, a variance on that. Okay, I challenge, is that possible, you know? And the other thing is, I just need to make clear to myself, because it wasn't in this piece of paper clear, that these are two living units, and they're not living in the units in the fact that they have two kitchens. Is that clear? That there's no two kitchens? They have separate, you access them apparently from the outside of the building, but...
So it's, I'm going to refer you to Linda, she's very familiar with this project.
Yeah, hi. There's only one kitchen. And we are requiring that they file a deed restriction, which gets recorded at the county, stating that because they don't want to internally connect the two levels, it'll be recorded at the county that states that they can't have any kind of a kitchen facility downstairs. And in Fairfax, any sink outside of a bathroom and a counter is a kitchen.
Yeah, I've been there.
So, yeah, you have. So they will do a deed restriction if they want to have this proposal, but there's no second kitchen proposed.
Because it sounds very much like a duplex, and I don't want duplexes to start popping up around my neighborhood.
No, the way it's designed, it's considered one unit. There's no second kitchen.
Okay. That's all. And with the garage thing, I still take issue with that.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this project? Okay, well, then I'll bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. Is there anyone else? Do you want to ask Linda any questions, or do you want to weigh in on this project? Either way.
Question for staff. The, what is the spirit of the covered parking requirement? Is it to shield from view automobiles or...
You know, I wasn't here when that was adopted, but I can only assume that it may have been to protect a developer coming in and not providing covered parking, and then people coming and buying the home afterwards and not having protection for their vehicles. I mean, in the hillside areas, there's trees that can drop limbs, they're open to the elements. Recently, we've had commissioners who are no longer here who have preferred garages as opposed to open parking because people have so much recreational equipment. They've got bikes, they've got garbage cans and things like that, that they would, they have indicated they would prefer them to be screened inside structures more like a garage. But that's all I can assume. I wasn't here when they, when they put that in place.
And covered parking has been loosely interpreted as either a garage or a carport. Do you think the original intention meant garage, but...
I think if they had meant garage, they would have said garage. It just says covered parking space.
Thank you.
Linda, I have a question for you. So if, in order to delete the requirement for covered parking, then findings would need to be...
Yes, you have to be able to make the findings for...
Okay. So at this point, that we would have to develop?
Yes.
If we thought that that was appropriate?
Yes, it was noticed, it was noticed that they were requesting a parking variance. So the noticing is good. If you wanted to try to recommend or try to approve a variance, you need to make those four legal findings, that there's something inherent in the land or the slope that makes it impossible for them to comply. That's, that's what staff has a hard time with, because physically, they're widening the driveway, and physically, they can provide the covered parking. But I can, I can bring that up to the dais if you guys want to give it a shot.
Is there a requirement of what space needs to be covered for the carport or garage?
Nine by 19. Yeah, they have to cover one. You want me to bring the code up?
I do have my code book, just in case you're worried. Yeah, I think just as a little more background, there have been actually a lot of concerns raised with covered parking when it's on a downslope. And so specifically, that the town code exempts it on a downslope because a lot of people are on that road, and they, if you put up a garage, and that's the only thing there, then it's a block, it blocks the view. So there've been a number of times where we've had to have findings to allow a garage that does block the view. And it's just entertaining to me in this case that we would, yeah, this would have to have findings to say that it's blocking a view, but it's not the normal view. I, I'm trying to remember back to the discussions with, with the new town plan, and I'm just not recalling if, I know we're going to be going through a zoning exercise at some point, but I don't recall if this really came up. I think I always thought of it as being required on the flats and it being controversial in the hills, but I went through it this evening, and I didn't see anything that popped out at me one way or the other in terms of the town plan, weighing in on this. But I can say, I've, I've, I think we've had a lot of cases, the reason things come to us as hearing items rather than, you know, consent items is usually there's a variance that's being requested. And in the town of Fairfax, based on the lot size and the lot widths, there are often variances required simply because the lots are so narrow that you couldn't put any building on it without a variance. So we've had a lot of those cases, but this is the first case I remember with the requirement of a structure when it's not been requested. Usually, it's the other way around. But from my perspective, I've, you know, having looked at the site, have a sense of the site. This would be a structure that's sort of offset and not built as part of the structure. I'm, I'm thinking of the design review part. It's just, it would just be plopped down as a single, single structure. The driveway comes up, and you can park two cars next to each other. So if you just have to do one, but you don't have to do the second one, that sort of sets an interesting offset. And the reason I was asking about the fire and the wildland/urban interface is that there's, I don't think that's really been considered in any scenarios with actually having a requirement that adds a new structure on a site that's in the wildland/urban interface. We're having to remove 53 trees to meet the code, yet requiring additional, whether it's flammable or not, it's requiring additional structure in that same zone. So from my perspective, that's, you know, one reason why I would be comfortable allowing for that variance in this case, because of the fire, the fire issues, it's not desired. You know, there's visual effects, and it's really to just the landowner, the resident. It doesn't sound like it would affect anybody else either way. So I think that's, that's kind of where I fall on this.
It's my understanding that the skirt on the, below the deck is probably something required by the fire department. It's, I guess I'm asking the building official, it's, this support structure for the deck has to be, have a non-combustible siding on it?
Typically, the wooey requirements are only for new structures. That's 100% new structures. The fire department may require something like that as a trade-off if they can't meet other requirements. So sometimes the fire department will require wooey requirements if all conditions cannot be met.
Because typically, if that were a deck that had been built 50 years ago, there wouldn't, you know, there would just be exposed posts.
That's correct.
I'm just curious if perhaps, given that the, the purpose or supposed purpose of a garage is to conceal from view cans, garbage cans, what have you, is that area underneath the deck utilizable possibly for some kind of storage of those kinds of things? And if so, would that, if there is some sort of an arrangement with the fire department about sheathing the understory of that deck with non-combustibles, would that be a problem to put openings or doors in that understructure?
Well, I think the reason there's a skirt on that is because of the wooey requirements. You can't leave the underside of the deck exposed. But I would think that right now, it's E-P-A decking, so it's, the water runs through it. But it could be used for storage, and part of it could be made waterproof, could be used for garbage cans, I suspect, with, with doors.
Thank you. I think that may be an alternative way to, to treat it if we decide to waive the covered parking requirement along with the fact that it is a steep upslope and vehicles are largely not visible from the street.
I would just add, if it's a car, covered parking doesn't mean it's screening anything. It just means it's covering something, so, so the, so the requirement actually wouldn't provide any screening of any kind necessarily by its definition unless it was a garage.
Barbara, did you want to weigh in on anything here?
I mean, I'm looking at trying to consider how we would make findings. And having just read the general plan, I don't recall anything in there that specifically spoke to this issue and the issues that Brownan's bringing up. Well, I think they're valid. I also agree with Linda that a carport can be constructed of something that is not flammable and that should some point somebody move, then someone's left with uncovered parking, so, which they may have to do themselves later. But having seen the site, I don't think it would really be very visible to anybody other than the people that live there. I guess I'm, I don't have any really good insights on this one, but I don't see a way to make these findings either.
Anyone else you want to weigh in?
I think I come to the same conclusion as Barbara on this, that I don't know how we can come up with legal findings to remove it.
So while we searched the code book, my personal opinion is that I think I agree with the direction of trying to limit the number of structures on the site for, you know, I have three reasons for the flammability reasons and for the visual, for the visual effect from the site, and also for the economics of it. So I, I would love to see if there's a way to work out the findings. And Linda, you said there's just the one that you are having a hard time finding a path through, but it seems like there's more than that there. So can you enlighten us on that?
There, okay, there are no, there's already a flat area where a covered parking space could be created, so you can't say that there's something, you know, that the lot's too steep or that there's too many trees in the only area where parking could be provided, so you can't meet the parking, the covered parking requirement. The third one is that the strict application of the title would result in excessive or unreasonable... or unreasonable hardship. And I mean, your financial, it's supposed to be a physical hardship to create the parking. And I, I'm just not able to make those. And you, and you, and you, if you are going to make them, you have to try to make them specific for this site so that other people on the upslope don't come in and just say, you know, they did it, I, I don't want to have it. You're basically undermining the ordinance. And I don't know, you know, it may not be a good ordinance, but that's what we're working with right now, unfortunately. There were reasons why they put it in place in the first place, I think, you know. Some people want to protect their vehicles and want to have covered and don't want to buy a house, you know, and be left without any covered parking that they have to build themselves. So I think that's the intent.
So I would just put out there, all this, the town code was, especially that code was done far long before wildland urban interface. These things weren't being discussed. So I think there's the fourth item, which is the granting. I'm, I'm looking at findings for variances of off-street parking or off-street loading regulations.
Okay, well, that, that's, that's for the number. The struc, structure variances are the ones above that.
Oh seventy?
Yeah.
Yeah, because that one has, the variance will not create a safety hazard. I guess that's kind of the opposite. All right, well, I, I, I think it's important that we consider that the wildland urban interface is, is something that's been with us for about five years now. And none of the town, especially this, this issue, has not been explored or, or thought about in the context of wildland urban interface. The location of this site is way up in that, you know, in that area. And again, I, you know, we've gone through a, a lot of planning around the tree ordinance and protecting trees, yet we're authorizing the removal of 53 trees to provide the vegetative protection in this area. And by code, then we're requiring the addition of an additional structure. And even if it's non-flammable, it still changes the dynamics of the fire and how it behaves in that area. So I think it's just, they seem to me to be a little bit conflicting. And whether we can find findings or not, I don't know, but I, I think it's a.
Can I just ask you how you'd feel if you had an applicant that wanted a covered parking space?
That's their prerogative.
Okay, but you're trying to tie.
This isn't preventing, this, they're asking for a variance to a requirement.
But you're.
As opposed to, if they wanted covered parking, that's, that's allowed. Even if it wasn't required, you, if it was part of your design, then you could allow it.
But I think, but what I'm hearing you say is you're heading towards kind of trying to say that the second structure increases the fire hazard on the site.
I, I'm.
If that's a finding, then that would work against anyone who wanted a second structure for cover, covered parking, right?
I'm not hearing that this has been considered by the fire department as part of their review of the site. That's, there's no design, there's no information. We're making a requirement, which would then have to go through additional review. Does it need a fire sprinkler if they decide to do garage, all of those things? So none of those things are being considered now based upon a requirement to add this site.
So if you, you can continue it and what we had done to try to help the applicants through the process is, they have to be reviewed by the fire department again anyway at the building permit stage, so.
And Mike, if our role is also design review, would that structure fit in with the context of the site? Is it just going to be dropped right in? How does it interface with the other elevations? How close is it to the bill? All of those questions. Do they do it on outslope side? Do they do it in slope side? Does this prevent them from just, okay, we'll add the garage, we'll, we'll push it farther in so we don't block our view? I mean, we, we don't have any of that information other than requiring a specific.
So you, so you either make, you either make the findings to grant the variance or continue it and ask them, it sounds like you want, if they're going to build it, you want to see what it looks like and you want a fire department review. So those are your two options at this point.
Well, how do we deal with it if we're requiring it, but we're not reviewing it? Would it come back to us anyway? That would be something that we could, we could hand to you guys to be able to review.
You can either have it come back or you can, you can make it subject to staff reviewing the, what it looks like.
So I, I guess for folks on the committee that have had experience with design review, is a standalone carport in the context of a house that has design review, would that be something that should be looked at? Or would it be looked at in the context of it? So.
I would say so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it seems to make sense that, you know, not, not to have the garage for the, for the reasons that Brandon listed, but there's also conflict with the code, so figure out a way to resolve that.
Rich, can I ask you a question? Or can you come talk to us for a second? I, I have a question in how, how you're envisioning this carport, provided it's required? And whether you and your client are willing to accept a continuance in order to work that out and at the same time have the fire department weigh in and give us a little bit more information about that? I just kind of want to get a take on that if you have one.
I'm not sure I heard all of that discussion, but I would suggest, what I'd like to suggest, if it's possible, is to hopefully grant approval of the project, subject to either providing a carport or, or getting a variance for a carport so that we have, we have time to look at what a carport might mean or reasons to justify not having a carport. And at the same time, not slowing down the process of getting working drawings into the building department so we can build this year. So I would suggest that approval be given with those, with that condition.
And Linda, can we, Linda, can we, in, in crafting an approval and making it subject to having the carport come back through design review, can we split the project like that?
We were just thinking that you, you could, you could continue the variance request, but you're going to have to put some kind of a condition on the project approval that something happened before they get their building permit. Because otherwise, you're going to have a house under construction, a 50% remodel without the parking issue having been dealt with. And that's tied into the 50% remodel, the definition. So they can, you know, if, if you approve the house, they can start working on their working drawings, they could submit them for review, but we couldn't issue the building permit until either the covered parking was provided or you granted them a variance. Right.
But we could come back to you next month with continuing the variance issue, which allows time for us to work with the applicant and also discuss it with the fire department and think through some of the considerations. I mean, your discussion has piqued the issue that the whole wildlands urban interface issue and the requirement of sprinklers have come along after the code. And in fact, sprinklers are an unfunded mandate, so that is a financial requirement that nobody else's, but the applicant has to pay for because of this new regulation. And it does sound a little, having listened to your discussion, it sounds a little counterintuitive that we want to reduce fuel load and yet the code is stipulating that you have to increase fuel load depending on the materials used. So it seems like there's a middle path there to get them on their way with the working drawings and continue this piece of it. And we will be revisiting eventually this part of the code.
So in light of that information, does anyone have any other questions or more?
I do want to ask one. If, if I'm looking at planning condition number two, which is the covered space must be completed during the first phase of construction, and I guess if, if we were to go that way, does it make sense to complete that before the construction's done? Because it seems like it'd be right in the middle of the driveway where construction activities are probably going to be happening.
Well, they can start, but it has to be part of the first phase of the project because what happens for us repeatedly is they build the house and then they say they've run out of money and the parking never gets built. So they may not even need it. Sounds like you guys are going to revisit that issue and.
Well, I mean, but if that were going, I just was.
Yeah, it's, it's a typical, typical condition because the town has run into this problem over and over and over. It's the same as with landscaping requirements, you know? They build the house and they don't want to put the required landscaping in, so.
Well, I mean, I, I, I get if we can't find findings and, and that. I, I, I would propose, but they, I don't know that they truly fit, is the variance affects, would, the, the findings for the variances, that the, the parking structure would affect the viewshed of the residents, which is only impacting them and that could be contradictory to goals of the wildland urban interface. But those would be the two things that I would, I would look at as findings, but it doesn't sound like they sort of have a place to land, given the, given the requirements for variances, so.
I would suggest that we, we go with the option of granting the project, continuing the variance, making all that subject. Seems like the applicant is, is open to that approach and in fact proposed something similar. And then we can get them moving, but still revisit the issue of the carport in more detail. And, because I think we're speculating a lot and I'd like to have more information before we make that decision.
Would you like to make a formal motion in that regard?
I would, but I'm not sure how to state it exactly. Thank you. So I would make, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project, but continue the application for the variance as to the covered parking and that the building permit cannot be issued until the decision is made.
Until the variance is either granted or, or a structure is approved by the commission.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
And so by doing that, we're asking for a design for the carport?
No, no, we'll, we'll run it, you know, we'll, we'll talk to the applicant about it and we'll run it by the fire department and ask them if their, if their VMP plan would change substantially if there was a structure over that parking. And then if the applicants don't want to design something, they can come back to you and say, we really, we really don't want to design something. And then you'll have to make findings for a parking variant. You'll be right where you are now, but at least you'll have input from the fire department and you'll have time to think about some findings.
I mean, I, I guess my concern is that we would go in a month, it'd be, well, we don't want to do it, but we don't have findings and then we're requiring, again, we're in the position of requiring the construction of something without any design or ability to review it. So I, I guess that's what I'm trying to avoid. But I know, I don't want to also burden the applicant.
Well, it's either that or, it's either that or you take action tonight and try to see whether you can make findings. And if you can't, then you can go forward with the, with the conditions as is. The applicants have the right to appeal. I mean, it, it sounded like the applicants were okay with the, with the continuance to try to think about this for a while and get input from the fire department, but maybe I misunderstood.
Our goal is to try to get it into the building department so we can have everything processed and get it out to bid. It seems like we hopefully can handle the carport separately. Either, either a carport will be required and we'd have the time beyond this meeting to design it, or if we feel that we can put forward the arguments for a, a variance, then we take that approach.
The applicants are more familiar with their property than staff. They may be able to come up with some suggestions for findings if they, if they have more time. And we'll have input from the fire department.
Right. My concern is what, what Brandon's bringing up, Brandon, sorry, is bringing up, is that even though it's a design review proposal, it, it doesn't sound like at any point we're going to be reviewing the design of it. Is that true?
You could be. If it comes, if, if you're requiring the structure, you could require it to come back to you for design review and not leave it to staff's discretion. I mean, that would be actually more normal. And that's sort of the risk here. But I imagine that you don't have the working drawings ready yet, I wouldn't expect, so the working drawings for the building are essentially ready. Oh, okay. Well, then that's a risk for them to hold it over.
Staff, staff may not have handled this well, but see, we were faced with either having to deny the project because they didn't want to provide an integral part that's required by the code or to approve it subject to the parking structure being, being provided. So.
It sounds like if you were to go forward with the majority of the project, not the variance, it would give us all time to work with the applicant, work with the fire department, put our best heads together and come back with you and give us our, give you our, our new take on it. I think you brought up some interesting points that were worth discussing offline.
So could I add a friendly amendment to the motion of, I agree with what you've said about approving the bulk of the project and continuing the variance on the parking structure with the caveat that at, at the point where decisions are made, if a carport is required, we would like to have it go through design review.
When it comes back to you, you can stipulate it at that point, too.
Okay.
So I think I'm, I can second it. It's sort of the aggregate of our opinion that we want to allow it to proceed, but we still have questions with the carport and will, it sounds like we can revisit it next month, so I second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it's approved with, approved with a small continuance.
And, and the part you did approve is subject to an appeal for 10 days.
And the part we did approve is subject to appeal, a 10-day appeal process that includes a fee of $500. So we're going to move on.
Madam Chairman, I'll interrupt for a second.
Please.
I noticed that we actually, we love to see the agenda go fast, but we skipped over the public comments on non-agenda items, just in case.
No, I asked.
Oh, you did. Forgive me, I didn't hear that.
That's okay. So we're moving to the item number three, 727 Center Boulevard, application 1310. I need to recuse myself from this subject, so I'm going to jump down. And Morgan has to recuse, so you guys are on.
All right. So in the absence of the vice chair, we still have a quorum in the absence of the vice chair and Commissioner Hall. So I think we're, the remains of us are ready for a staff report.
Okay, in 2001, the Planning Commission and the Town Council approved discretionary permits and a mitigated negative declaration for the Good Earth Market to relocate from 1966 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard to 720 Center Boulevard, the old Albertson's Building. In August, the building department allowed the store to open because the construction was completed and there were only some minor design items that had been changed and that needed to be approved by the Planning Commission. The meeting tonight is being, is going to discuss two, two, two things. One is the minor design changes, which are as follows. None of the equipment that currently exists on the rear of the roof was shown on the original design plans that were brought before the design review board and the commission. The equipment location and proposed partial screening needs to be reviewed and approved. A new six-foot fence was built on top of the rear retaining wall, which was a design change and also requires a fence and wall height variance from the Planning Commission because it reaches up to nine, to nine to 10 feet in height. And the code limits fence heights and retaining walls to six feet. The applicants are also proposing a rolling gate that would screen the lower portion of the loading dock in the eastern parking lot that was not part of the original project. The applicants would also like to eliminate the air pump that's been shown on the plans at the southwest corner of the site because Sunshine Bikes, which is directly across the street, already has a bike, a bike pump, air pump that's, that can be used by cyclists. And there were several minor landscaping changes. Some in-ground planters were replaced with raised planters. Street trees along center were retained instead of replay, being replaced. And two trees were installed in the planner behind the business monument sign. The second portion, second request being made by the applicants is that they would like to change the delivery hours and, and types of trucks. Let's see, to screen the equipment on the rear roof, the applicants are proposing to paint the equipment and to put in some. applicants are proposing to paint the equipment and to put in some metal screening on the lower portion of the equipment. However, they're only proposing this on the northeast side of the roof. So the equipment that does exist on the northwest side, they aren't proposing any kind of screening. Staff believes that the equipment is very visible, traveling both east and west on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. It's also very visible from pastory, so we believe that they should propose some kind of screening for all the equipment there. We don't have any kind of problem with the proposed rolling gate. We feel that the design that they've come up with does comply with the design review criteria. So the original condition for the delivery vehicles limited the deliveries to one 60-foot truck between 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. Monday through Friday, and two 45-foot trucks between 6:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday. Trash was to be picked up after 8:00 a.m. And the applicants have informed staff that since they've been operating the store for over a year, these limitations are having a negative impact, not only on the store operations, but also on the smaller businesses that use smaller trucks to deliver to the site. They've asked in a letter to the commission dated February 17, 2013, to be allowed three truck deliveries between 5:00 and 6:00 a.m., and unlimited truck deliveries after 6:00 a.m. The town, however, has continued to receive complaints about truck delivery noises, including the noise from the backup beepers that's made in the mornings. And so in an effort to reach some kind of a compromise between the needs of the store and the sleep patterns and quality of life for the neighbors, staff is recommending that there be no deliveries to the site prior to 6:00 a.m., but the number, size, and frequency of deliveries after that time be unrestricted. So we're recommending approval of the revised project based on the findings contained in the staff report, subject to compliance with the conditions as follows. One, deliveries shall not begin prior to 6:00 a.m., but shall be unrestricted after that. Two, all the equipment on the northern lower roof shall be screened in a manner approved by the Director of Planning and Building Services. Three, the location of the rolling gate at the rear loading deck shall be subject to review and approval by the Fairfax Police Department and the Ross Valley Fire Department. And condition four, that conditions two, three, and four be complied with before the project is issued a final occupancy permit. And that would conclude our report.
And I just have something to add to that, if I may. I just want to clear up a technical error that I'm responsible for on the background section, paragraph three. In fact, there was an original temporary certificate of occupancy issued when they opened in January that went for six months. That lapsed. We extended it for six months. That's what lapsed on February 10, and it was extended that very day until 30 days after you make a decision on the project. So there was not, in fact, a lapse on the temporary certificate of occupancy up until this point in time. And I'm sorry I didn't catch that. As most of you know, there's two parts of our shop. There's the building shop, building side of the shop, and there's the planning side. And it's my job to make sure both hands are speaking to each other, and sometimes things don't make it in the file when we're in a rush doing things. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then if I could just sort of summarize again what's being discussed here. As normal with a big project like this, certain things get changed in the field during construction, whether they are slightly different or they're dropped. We have no problems with what happened, and we're supportive of all the changes. The one issue is with regards to the screening of the equipment on the back lower deck, or lower roof. And with that regard, we are, our position is that it should be screened so that you cannot see it from Sir Francis Drake in either direction, and we're asking you for discretionary review of that, whatever intervention they come up with, that we take care of it at the staff level. And we're not prescribing what that screening would be. We're just saying that it should perform in such a way that it screens it from public view. And then finally, aside from those main issues of what was not done or done slightly different as the plans, is the truck delivery issue. And on that point, I just want to articulate that, you know, we do our best as staff to provide you with well-rounded and reasoned discussion, and we try to do due diligence and background information gathering and whatnot. So we went out and we tried to survey some markets. But it's a very technical field, and the markets are not all the same, the surroundings are not all the same, the size of the markets are not all the same. So while we made every effort to go out and analyze comparables, it's not always easy to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges. So in regards to the trucks, our staff recommendation was, is, to eliminate that first 60-footer between 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning, because we felt that was the most disruptive for the community. And on the flip side, we thought by relaxing the requirement after 6:00, so that there's carte blanche, as many trucks as necessary on either side of the building, that that would, in fact, provide more opportunity to unload this enormous amount of product before 8:00. However, we're not the experts on this, so I would encourage you to pay close attention to the discussion of the applicant's points on how they run their business and the need for that early 60-footer truck between 5:00 and 6:00. And likewise, as is our role here, listen to the public testimony with regards to those truck deliveries. As you all know, you know, our job is often mitigating and balancing the needs of each, of different individuals and the needs of the individual against the society or the community as a whole. And that's a difficult process. So we try our best. We don't always get it right. We put forward what we thought was a reasoned argument, but I just want to reiterate, you should consider closely the testimony tonight in your decision-making. And that would be it. Thanks.
And I just want to make sure that I'm clear, I'm missing something. So the recommended conditions, you listed four conditions, and I'm looking at something that only has three.
Oh, yeah. The fourth one I added verbally because I had forgotten to write it. But, you know, they really should comply with the screening requirements and everything before they get their final occupancy.
Right. So it's just the, it's kind of the summary finding that.
Right. But thanks for pointing that out.
And let me just reiterate one other point also. The rolling gate was a voluntary aspect that they brought forward, but there is one tangent to the screening on top. They in their discussion about the rolling gate were offering that in lieu of the screening on the top. We weren't requesting the rolling gate, so when it comes to the screening versus a rolling gate, we'd rather have them spend the money to screen the equipment on top. And lastly, just to reiterate, what the applicant is asking for is not what the staff is recommending with terms of the truck delivery. They want to relax the two 40-footers between 6:00 and 7:00, and have those allowed between 5:00 and 6:00, and then also have carte blanche after 6:00. Thank you.
Okay. So are there questions for staff before we hear from the applicant?
I guess mine would be, do we have any restrictions on other businesses and the delivery in that downtown zone? No. At least not that I know of. I mean, there's a lot of older businesses, but I don't believe there are any restrictions. But I also don't know what the delivery times are either.
So following up on that question, the IGA market, they have no restrictions on delivery at this time?
You know, I'd really have to go back and check. I couldn't answer that.
Okay. I'm just trying to remind ourselves of the noise. There is a limit to noise, and that's really construction noise, but I think that's an 8:00 a.m., not a delivery noise.
Yes. And also, the backing up beepers on the trucks and the slamming of the gates or backing into the loading dock, that's a very quick noise, and our noise ordinance actually allows for short intervals. And that's something that we will someday hopefully be revisiting also. And there's also more technological information that'll be coming to you by the applicant tonight on that, too.
Okay. All right. So any more questions or ready to open up to the applicant? All right. So if the applicant can come up and provide us your information, thanks.
Hi, I'm Rich Hall. I'm the managing partner for Fairfax Center Properties, Fair and Sound Plaza, Fairfax Plaza, all the different ways you know it. So we're responsible for the exterior of the buildings as the landlord for the Good Earth. And so the first section, the six things that are on the plans, not the delivery part, is in my court. And then the Good Earth owners will address the delivery portion of it. So staff has recommended acceptance of all the variances except for the screening of the equipment. We're sorry that in the elevation, it did not show that equipment. That equipment was there before and was planned to be there all along, but when the architect rendered the back of the building, they did not show on the north elevation that that equipment was there. When it was originally constructed, that equipment bothered me, too, because it was very sort of like an eye-catcher. But then as soon as the store opened, it became evident that the dock, to me, was much more of a visual pollution, so to speak, than the equipment on the top. When I drive up, particularly, well, when you're going west, you certainly notice the dock, I think, more than anything else in the back of the building. And so that's where the idea of putting the rolling gates up as a suggestion was proposed. It is true, it doesn't do anything about the eastbound direction, but that equipment is relatively small on that aspect of the roof. So the reason that we're asking for that exception, or not do that, is simply be, well, one of them is economic. The second is that it potentially is going to require roof penetrations, which of course compromises the watertightness of the building. And third, it makes it much more difficult to service the equipment that's on the roof, because of course then there's a barrier around the equipment. Sure, we could figure out a way to do it if you deem that required, but that's the reason we're asking for that, to not be required, and put up the rolling gates in lieu of that to screen the visibility of the dock when there are not deliveries. Obviously, operationally, it's more challenging for the Good Earth, but they've been generous in offering to provide the gates and deal with having to put them back and forth, et cetera, when there are deliveries, not deliveries, et cetera. So the other conditions were all things that we, the other things that are on there that staff is recommending approval of, are all things that we just encountered when we started construction. The soil was such that we had to raise the planters, or we weren't going to have plants that live because the drainage of the soil itself was so poor. The bike pump, you know, et cetera, fairly small things. But I'm happy to answer your questions about any of those.
So I think what we'll do is, we should reserve the questions to this, and then we'll sort of kind of split this in two parts, so we'll do the delivery stuff as a separate thing. So questions on any of these items?
I was happy that the roof screening item was brought up on the application here, because it's something that's always bothered me every time I drive by, and felt that it was something that we may have missed during the design review approval, because I, so I'm, I would, I really would like to find a way where we can have all of that roof area screened. It seems to me there must be a way that it could be done without adding roof penetrations to that area. I think if you could maybe mount something on the outside fascia or something. I don't think it needs to be very tall, but I would really like to see that all of the, all of that equipment screened.
I agree with Commissioner Curland's concerns and requests.
So I drive by there quite often, and I'm always curious if there's actually a problem with people getting on the roof, because I've seen, and so I'm wondering if the screening in some way could actually help protect and prevent access to the roof in a way, because it seems like that's a pretty vulnerable spot for...
Yeah. On the, to answer that question, we originally actually proposed taking the fence that we built that is part of the proposal here. There was a fence there. We replaced the fence with a new one. It requires a variance, because on the dock side, it is higher than code. On the Sir Francis Drake side, it is six feet high, so it doesn't require a variance. But because when you approach it, when you're on the dock, it is more than six feet high, because the dock has a retaining wall. We actually had originally intended to extend that fence on along Sir Francis Drake for that very reason, because we do have kids jump on the roof and go up and put graffiti on the clear story, which is obviously not something that we want to have happen. But it will require putting, you know, if we continue the fence, some people could perceive that to be a worse design approach than the other. But yeah, we would certainly be open to just continuing the fence and tying it down to the corner of the building. It would visually block the visibility of that approach to the equipment, and would also protect us from people getting on that, make it more difficult for the kids to get on the roof.
And I guess I'm hearing that it's possible that the screening, even if it's mounted on the fascia or something, could also prevent that, because you wouldn't be able to jump onto it.
It would prevent, there are two roofs there.
Depending on the height, obviously.
There's the lower flat roof, which is what would be screened. The sloped roof is actually what they more frequently jump onto.
They're able to make it out of that.
And they would still be able to get on that.
The other question I had on the rolling gate is, from the design, it looks like it's four and a half feet tall. So that would be up on the...
It's a rolling gate that literally just...
It would be up on the...
...accordions on the deck, on the dock.
So what would that, how would that screen what's on the roof?
It wouldn't screen what's on the roof. It would screen the activity on the dock.
Right. And what about all of the materials that are not on the dock? There's a, just even from the photo, there's a bunch of, it looks like that's kind of the recycling area that's down at grade on the driveway?
The recycling cans are along the, along the parking lot, but that's the only thing that's not on the dock.
Okay. So those are kind of hidden behind the sign, if that's true.
They're hidden behind the sign and the hillside, you know, ramps up quite significantly, plus the redwood trees start right there. So, you know, a significant amount of that area is screened by the redwood trees. You really only see it from the pastory, Sir Francis Drake intersection, and then when you're coming east, you see it until you hit the redwood trees there. There's, you know, there's a window of vision that's available on both ends, but the redwood trees screen what 70% of the length of the visible area.
Okay. So what I'm hearing on the screening part is, and I don't know that this has been thought about, but whether fencing would accomplish at least some of the screening or not. But it sounds like the screening wouldn't address people getting on the roof. So theoretically, it would...
The screening is not going to address getting on the roof.
Okay. That's good for me to know. Thanks.
Yeah. And the fence, the fence would effectively screen the eastbound traffic visibility, would not screen the westbound traffic.
Okay.
I just want to raise a concern about extending the fence. Some of us were very involved in a potential zoning project that would have created structures that were high enough to kind of obstruct the visual landscape. So I would really have, well, I realize it's a safety issue with kids and such getting on the roof. I think we're really talking about screening equipment, and I really would not want to leave something like fencing as left to working out with staff, because I think that really is something we want to really watch carefully about marring our visual landscape in Fairfax.
And I just wanted, I wasn't sure if it was access onto the flat roof, so it helps to know it's, the screening on the flat roof wouldn't do a thing. So that was my big question. Okay. So do we have any, do we have any more questions for the applicant on this, on these items, or do we want to sort of start the, we'll start the delivery question now? So if you want to hand off. Okay. Thanks.
Hi, everybody. My name's Al Balak, partner of the Good Earth. Mark and I, or Mark's here, too, FYI. In terms of the trucks, I mean, thanks, Jim and Linda, for helping bring clarity to what our ultimate desires are, which is to increase the amount of early morning trucks. From the current, maybe I just reiterate, so we're all really clear. Currently, it's one at 5:00 and two at 6:00, large trucks we're talking about. Everybody else has been trying to wait till 7:00 a.m. to come to us. Although I, we appreciate the fact that, I think that the town and their recommendation tried or saw some benefit, and clearly there is, at lifting the restriction for everybody having to come after 7:00 to 6:00 a.m. That's a positive, for sure. There's an awful lot of small companies that try to get into Fairfax and get out of Fairfax earlier than later because of the Ross Valley traffic. earlier than later because of the the Ross Valley traffic. The the need for the other three trucks earlier is what we've been used to. And it's been 13 years of receiving our goods anywhere from 3:00, 3:30, 4:00 AM on. In the old location that we moved out of, that's what we were used to, that's the way we've set up the business, the idea of a night crew even there, stocking product was not in the cards for us, and it still is not today. A night crew or a late afternoon, evening delivery system for us means putting stock up in the middle of the night. And there are stores that do that. There's nobody around us, directly around us here in the Ross Valley that do that, but we know it's done and and for to some success, they they have success at doing it. I just don't think we here in Fairfax have the the labor pool to draw from at trying to stock a considerable amount of crew members, close to 10 it takes to get all the goods up today, four day, four out of the seven days. So I really, you know, we we come today with the request for three trucks. I don't know, I'm here obviously for questions and and trying to bring clarity to you why we need those three trucks early, but that's our that's our business desire. Now, the town's recommendation being no trucks till six is pretty far from what we need and want. The the only other option, you know, if I had to pick a truck to show up, it's four days a week, our grocery truck at 5:00 AM, and then the two other trucks, which are produce companies and produce trucks, will continue to abide by the 6:00 AM rule. They're not happy about it. There are, you know, I do appreciate, too, that there was some, trying to understand what deliveries to stores look like in the Ross Valley and, well, one, maybe Scotty's Market, it's it's just not at the same same kind of operation we have, and United Markets certainly is, it's not, neither of those two locations are apples to apples. The only one that comes close here in the Ross Valley is the Woodlands Market in Kentfield, and they're, they have no restrictions. They receive their groceries between 1:00 and 2:00 AM, and their crews start at 2:00. And then our, and then they have their produce trucks, two of the three produce companies that deliver to them are our vendors, and they both arrive there between 3:00 and 4:00 AM. Most produce company, most produce trucks leaving the Bay Area markets, the two in San Francisco, one in San Francisco, one in South San Francisco, and those, and the one in Oakland, the trucks are pulling out at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. Most large store produce deliveries happen well before 5:00 AM. Now, there are, you know, Scotty's has a neighborhood restriction, United has a restriction. I don't think Delano's has any restrictions. It'd be very difficult for us to live with a restriction of 6:00 AM for that grocery truck. Any more notes there? I do want to add that the truck that, the the grocery truck that we're talking about does not have any backup beepers. They haven't had backup beepers for four, I'm sorry, five months now. I have, well, I have detail there if you want to know about how that's possible, but essentially, that's the the early morning truck has no backup beepers. Yeah, that's about it for the for our side.
Maybe I'll just add a few things. One is the the two markets that were cited, Scotty's and United, both have residential right next to them, which I think is part of why they've got a restriction. And the the truth is that Woodlands is a lot more like Good Earth is with a little bit of space between the store receiving and the the community. And I just wanted to kind of add, you know, I think there's been a little bit of conversation around, you know, the the two partners at Good Earth needs there versus the community's needs. And I just wanted to let you know that, you know, Good Earth, you know, we have 250 employees that are, you know, to my mind, you know, not all of them live in Fairfax, but they certainly contribute to our community in a very real way. So, you know, I think what you're doing is you're actually balancing, you know, the the livelihoods of a lot of people here, and so I just wanted to stress that. I think a lot of lot of folks have seen all the, you know, all our customers at the store, which we brought into town, and, you know, I think the perception is, oh, those guys are doing great. And, you know, we are doing great in a lot of ways. You know, the reality is, we actually just had to go over, we have a profit sharing system at Good Earth, and we just had to last night tell our staff that their profit share is actually down from what it was in the old store. So, you know, although we're we're happy where we are, you know, the the truth is is that, you know, we we need to do better as a business to be sustainable, and, you know, for a grocer, you know, grocery margins are are very low. You know, if we're going to make an adjustment to, you know, our our bottom line profits, you know, we only really have a couple of ways to do it. One is to raise prices. You know, probably the chief complaint that we get as a store is that our prices are high, so we can't do that. You know, we can lower wages to our crew, and, you know, frankly, you know, many of them are, you know, struggling to survive in Marin, as many of us are, and, you know, that's, you know, the last thing we want to do is lower wages to our crew. So the only real other tool that we have is our efficiency. And, you know, we have worked very hard over the years to be, we we move a lot of products through this store. I think when we've mentioned how many pallets are actually arriving, people kind of frequently kind of go, wow, you're selling, you know, you're you're receiving 20, you know, 25 pallets in a morning or or more. It's a lot of food, so it's a lot of product for us to get up fast, and, you know, efficiency is really critical to us. So, you know, I just wanted to say that that, you know, although it's sort of, you know, the recommendations from planning, I think, sort of made some assumptions about, well, you guys could just, you know, do without that truck between 5:00 and 6:00. And I, you know, I just wanted to, you know, let you know the impact of that to my crew. When we go to our crew and say, could we, could we live with that, you know, I get sort of like, you know, blank looks back, like, oh, my God, you know, don't, don't even bring that to us, kind of, because it would really cut into our efficiency tremendously. So, you know, I just hope you will, you know, look at it carefully. I feel like, you know, you sort of got us by the jugular here, and we're frankly real scared of losing that truck, so thank you.
Can we, it's, hold on, can we get your name for the record sheet?
It's Mark Squire. I'm one of the partners at Good Earth, and I'm also a Fairfax resident.
Okay. And then, are you part of the applicant group?
It's not public.
You? It's not open to the public yet?
Oh, not public yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're still, yeah, thank you. So, questions for the applicants?
Yeah, I just have one. I want to talk a little bit about the efficiency aspect. Could you highlight efficiency constraints that you would face if there was no 5:00 AM delivery and you had to wait until 6:00 o'clock?
Yeah, so it basically, it shifts everything one hour. What happens today with our restriction at 5:00 AM, like I, you know, my my point that we're used to having our crews start at 4:00 at the old store, we have, we start them at 5:00 now. If we had to start them at 6:00, well, let me, so what happens today, early on, is, I mean, it's like magic, basically. I mean, if I put a time lapse camera and watched it all come in and and the the plastic wrap out, all the pallets out, I mean, it's, it it all happens at warp speed, but it's still not enough time, not even close. We'll get, you know, we'll get 15 pallets of produce, we'll get six or seven pallets of groceries, and plus our refrigeration, they're not pallets, but they're boxes, will come in, and we will stock that product all day long. We will do what we can. All the all the product goes from the the dock right into the floor, into the middle of the floors, and the crew starts stocking it all. And come, you know, 7:30, 7:45, it's time to get the floor set and cleared from, in in order to open. We not, we don't leave pallets on the floor while we're open. So what doesn't get stocked, then gets trucked back into the back room, becomes very clogged back there every day, just moving, you know, our grocery back room is in between the dock and the kitchen. And so there's a lot of traffic through our back room, and when we have an exorbitant amount of product that has arrived that wasn't stocked before 8:00, it ends up there. We then, our our grocery staff, the first shift, continues to stock the rest, well, until about 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, until their shift is done. Our second grocery shift comes in at 11:00, 11:30, and closes the store, and they, too, are tasked with stocking the rest of the day's goods and customer service, which is critical to what we do. Help me if I have left a gap there for your understanding of how, of what you want to know.
That did a great job, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, that, you know, the third shift idea, or a night shift, would just, you know, would speak to Mark's point about becoming less efficient, more labor involved. It's not like we could get rid of grocery. We 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 could do with less, perhaps, grocery people throughout the day, but essentially, we're, that would drive us to a third shift, you know, 24-hour, three eight, three eight hour shifts.
I I have a question. Can you approximate, like, how many deliveries you get during the morning hours?
Great, yep. So the grocery, that that grocery truck brings us goods four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday.
Al, may I interrupt you a second? When you say the grocery truck, you're talking about the 60-footer in the 5:00 hour.
Right, thank you. Yeah, the large, most of our goods come to us via this truck. There's, you know, 50 small companies that will bring deliver, you know, things to us throughout the morning every day, but that truck brings four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, does not have backup beepers, is, arrives down at Red Hill some point early morning, he naps, and then arrives at our dock at 5:00, 5:01, 5:02. Others in the room may know even more than I do there.
Well, I, the what I was trying to ask was, how many other, like, smaller deliveries, about approximately, how many total deliveries do you?
Gotcha. Well, the other, so to, in in size, and the two produce companies come at 6:00 AM. We get one company five days out of six, and the second produce company comes to us three days out of six. So there's, there's, of those big three trucks, those are the the quantities of deliveries. Then, yeah, you're testing me on how many small vendors, you know, you're talking beer and wine, you know, dairy, the the local dairy comes separate to us a couple of times a week. You know, if I had to put a number of daily additional trucks, 30? Could be as it's as small as one bread line comes in a van to us, right? That's that's one of the 30. I mean, it could be pretty small, too.
Okay, so I think at this point, we'll, we want to open it up to the public for comments, and while, when you come up, please state your name, address, and we'll try to keep it to three minutes, roughly, so.
I'm Bob Mellon. I live at 20 Willow Avenue. I represent a group of residents, neighbors of the market. I wrote a letter to Mr. Moore at the beginning of this week. It's in the folder outside that reads material information submitted after the deadline, which was April 12th. And I'm sorry for that, but for the last five months, we have been listening to the assurances of the council and of store management that they would remedy this, the noise issue. At 2:00 hours and 6:00 minutes after the deadline for us to submit our issues, the chamber sent out a letter, which we didn't receive until the next day, from chamber member merchants, who are coincidentally acquaintances of ours, indicating that what we have been assuming for the last five months is in question, that in fact, instead of solving the noise problem, the store management is requesting, in their words, that the restrictions The councilman who gave us the assurance that he knew that the store would make this right for us has admitted that he made a mistake. So those comments are to explain why our argument was submitted late after the deadline. If we had known that these changes were in the mix, we would have gotten our act together sooner. For the last five months, we have comfortably watched Mr. Franks present our argument. We offered to him to give him support, and he refused. And he said he could handle it, and in our opinion, it seemed like it was going to be handled. However, that isn't the case. Once we got the chamber's letter that was written by Good Earth, not by the chamber, we mobilized, began, I think the most significant thing that we did is start canvassing, going door to door in the neighborhood. And we took a couple hours and visited 23 doors, and, which isn't a large number, but what is a large number is 100% of the people that we visited jumped on the opportunity to sign the petition to reduce the noise. That's where we are. My three minutes is about up. I will just say, it doesn't make much difference to us whether it's run, one truck or 10. Once you're awake, you're awake. And any of, I invite any of you to sleep on my couch and experience this in the morning, or talk to any of the people in the neighborhood, see how they feel. And when you are awakened by the one truck, you really, I mean, you're awake, right? And, you know, it's an issue. The store has presented its needs. We, as a community, have presented ours. I would argue that, I appreciate the planning department doing a survey of comparable stores. No store is exactly the same. IGA, whether it has restrictions or not, does not have the proximity of neighbors to its store, nor did Good Earth prior to moving to the new location. Woodland Markets, you know that it's not close to any homes there. I don't know what their delivery time is, but that comparison was off. I don't know what their delivery time is, but that comparison was over. Uh, I assume that the commission has read my letter. I'm not going to attempt to drag everybody through, through all the points. I appreciate you, uh, listening to our side of the story and, uh, I wish you well. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, sir. I, I, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate for the record that even though Mr. Mellon's letter came in, um, past the deadline to get in the packet, as is our normal practice, we provided you with that letter and it's in the public packet as well.
And, and I actually had a question, Mr. Mellon. I'm sorry that got away. Um, I think you've articulated your concern, but I'm just interested in hearing, it's, this, what is recommended by staff is acceptable or the existing, you're saying the existing condition is not acceptable. I'm, I'm trying to understand, you're concerned about the noise, but, but in terms of what's been proposed?
Our group feels that being awakened prior to six AM
Okay.
is unacceptable.
So the six AM?
Many of us, depending on when we get home from trips, uh, would like to sleep till noon, okay? But as a compromise, we feel that, uh, you know, we would, we value the store. We, we squander our money at the store, okay? Several times a week, in, in the hundred percent, all said the same thing. But at the end of the day, you know, five AM is early. Uh, Monday, I was there. The truck came five o'clock on the dot and it's, you know, it's an issue. Uh, so anyway, in answer to your question, six o'clock, uh, in the conversation we've had with our group would be a compromise. They want seven or later. Uh, but in answer to your question, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Anybody else from the public? Been waiting.
Members of commission, staff, and fellow citizens, my name is Chris Lang. I'm a town council candidate. I live on Canyon Road in Fairfax. So, we have several items here to discuss tonight. One is the fence to protect the roof from vandals getting on it. And I understand the issue about fences sticking up. The town hasn't been able to solve the right problem of the giant streetlights sticking up against the skylight, but we'll get to that later. Point being that the commission needs to approve the fence that keeps the people off the roof. As far as the screening goes down below, I noticed when I was turning onto Sir Francis Drake from Pastore, the line of sight is really good there now because the breadwood trees have been de-branched on the bottom. So you can see incoming traffic much better than before, which is very helpful. It improves the safety of the intersection. So I'm not sure what kind of screening the planning director will come up with in there, but I feel sure it, it'll be an improvement to hide the equipment without infringing upon the line of sight of cars turning right onto Sir Francis Drake. As far as the issue of the Fairfax's anchor store, the biggest business we have in town, two-hundred-and-fifty employees, uh, our new social village hub, it pains me to say this, but we have to consider the greater good in this case. Uh, we talk about the community's needs and the community being the neighbors mostly. It is a highway commercial zone. I worked really hard to try to get a different planting scheme along the new sidewalk there that would help absorb noise better, because the trees that are there now aren't really absorbing noise in my professional opinion. I'm a landscape contractor and tree surgeon. And, um, so I think it would behoove both parties, the town and the applicant, to revisit the landscape scheme, to put in more plant material that'll absorb noise. Uh, I'm into problem solving. So if the truck that comes at five AM doesn't have a backup beeper, then how is it waking up the neighbors? Is it just the engine noise or the brakes or something like that? I feel these are technical issues that can be solved without creating an onerous burden, a regulation on a biggest business in town. It's really important to listen to what the two partners said about their business and their staffing needs and getting the stuff in. All the other markets get stuff in really early, middle of the night, because you know what it's like trying to get out of here in the morning, if you ever take your kids to school. Like I take my kid to school, Drake, and it gets pretty sketchy out there in terms of traffic flow. Talking about Level D sometimes. I was on the planning commission. I know exactly about all this stuff. So I think it's important to balance the needs of a few neighbors with the greater community, but I'm not disparaging or denigrating their concerns. I used to, I live at the very end of a dead-end street surrounded by trees and the neighbor's dog would run out at three in the morning, bark once at a deer, and I would wake up. So I know exactly what they're talking about. But I used earplugs and then I lost my hearing, so it's great. But point being that I think it's really important to remember, this highway commercial zone, there's a few neighbors that are negatively impacted by the operations of our biggest business in town, and it would behoove us all to work on the technical issues. What's the truck actually doing that's waking them up? What is the sound that's abrupt or sharp? How can we mitigate that? I think that would be a really appropriate focus for the future. Um, and as such, then also focus on landscaping to create more of a buffer, a wall of plant material, as it were, uh, even, even so much as creating an arch over the thing, just big enough to let the truck in and have something sound blocking, whatever it takes. I think that we need to look further at the technical details of the whole situation so that both sides are feeling satisfied. But I think it is actually truly important to understand that they do need deliveries, really in the middle of the night. And if it's going to be too noisy for the neighbors, then the problem's got to be solved somehow. But I don't think the best approach is over, you know, a burdensome regulation saying, no, you can't do it because they need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Kiki Laporta. I live at twenty-five Glen Drive in Fairfax. And I'm here, uh, I am president of Sustainable Marin. I'm on the board of Sustainable San Rafael. I'm a lifetime member of Sustainable Fairfax, but I'm not speaking for any of those. I'm on the board of the Chamber of Commerce of Fairfax and I am speaking for that body. And I am a forty-seven, my family is a forty-seven year resident of Fairfax and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my family. I believe that the Good Earth, uh, use permit application for deliveries is respectful, restrained, and reasonable. This location has been in continuous operation as a supermarket, at least since nineteen sixty-six, when I moved to town, or as a former supermarket and derelict site, or as a future supermarket. I doubt that most of the residents who are, um, objecting to the noise were in their homes at that time. So it's not as though their homes and residency preceded the use of this location as a grocery store. Lucky's and Albertson's formerly operating in that site did not have delivery restrictions. Why does Good Earth? Nor did they have noise restrictions. As far as I have been able to discern, Good Earth is the only business that has delivery restriction, restrictions in town. In addition to the very rigid, um, requirements that have been placed on the store for their deliveries, to which they have tried very hard to, with which they've tried very hard to comply, and from what I understand, for the last three months, there have been no infractions whatsoever, they've also established something that nobody has talked about tonight, which I think is very, very important. If you live in Fairfax, your garbage gets picked up sometime between five and seven, one morning of the week. Mine wakes me up, but I know it's the garbage and I go back to sleep if I don't have to get up that day. What Good Earth has done to mitigate that problem of big, uh, garbage pickup trucks arriving and hauling away their garbage and all that attendant noise is to establish a compactor on-site and that compacted refuse is picked up later in the day. So I don't know if any calculation has been made as to the noise reduction related to that event and that, um, attempt on the part of Good Earth to be a good neighbor as related to the deliveries. Good Earth's taking over this site has removed a dilapidated, uh, eyesore and a potentially dangerous vacant building from our community. Uh, they have made an enormous sales tax contribution to our community and Good Earth is an asset to our community. They're providing jobs. They're drawing people to Fairfax who are frequenting our other establishments and, um, contributing to the community feel of our town. Uh, they are supporting nonprofits in town. They're good neighbors. And they're providing information and education about health and sustainability. So the Chamber of Commerce of Fairfax, me and my family, and, uh, the other, um, supporters of Good Earth would ask you to continue to support Good Earth, approve their use permit to allow their delivery as required at five in the morning, with the mitigations, as Chris suggested, that we may be able to develop from a techno, technology side, and support this community asset in this never-ending cycle of sustainability. I'd also like to mention that Woodlands Market has residences directly across the street, within twenty feet, twenty-five feet of the store. And I had something else, but I forgot. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Davey J. and I live at one thirty-four Canyon Road. Um, I was at home watching you guys on TV. I appreciated being on TV so I could, I could follow this. And so I wasn't planning on coming down.
So, so you're saying there's nobody watching now?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think my kids are watching any longer. They were definitely not pleased that I was there watching. Um, but I felt compelled to drive down and just say a few words. I, part of my business is in retail. And so when the partners of Good Earth were talking about efficiencies and about what it takes to run a retail business to get trucks in, get merchandise on the floor, and get your staff going, I've got some experience with that. And I can't stress enough, the idea of losing an hour and compacting that into one hour, that's an easy thing for people to say you've never been on a floor, but that is a pain in the neck. You know, people, it, it, it just doesn't happen that easy. And I think efficiencies are critical, especially in grocery. I don't work in grocery, but I know specifically what one of the partners said, the margins are incredibly thin. So for you to ask them to come, compact it, I, I think is really unrealistic. It is something that is not like you can just say, let's just do it in one hour. Um, you know, when, when things get backed up on a retail floor and consumers are coming in that store and they have a bad experience because there's a pallet in there and then someone runs into a pallet, things can just pile up on it, a little bit by little bit by little bit, and then you have a bad experience, then you have a, then somebody's frustrated, a frustrated consumer. So I just, I really wanted to, to drive that home, that there is a real impact to the, the, the elements of losing that hour. And the other thing that I, in the last speaker, just mentioned something is, this is a commercial zone. Those homeowners who bought there, bought that, their homes when that was a market. That was part of the deal. You know, you, you can't expect the town to go and change that or, or a business that came in is adding something to, to change their business for those homeowners. They knew that that was in place. And so I, I, I mean, as a homeowner myself, I, I know when I moved into my neighborhood, there were things that I, I had to accept that I couldn't, you know, that's part of the deal. That being a market is part of the deal. So I just wanted to drive that home, but more importantly, the efficiencies and, and what it takes to, to run a retail store with, with staff, with pallets, I mean, what they were explaining, those are real-life challenges that can get, that, that are, can be very difficult. Um, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Pamela Megs, three-ten Cypress Drive. Am I, I'm on TV? I didn't comb my hair. Um, I was on the planning commission for eight years and out of that eight years, I was the chair. And we've, this is a very unique situation, but from what I remember, if, within that time period, and this is a special, it's not a use permit, it's not on the agenda, how is it defined, Jim? What we're looking at?
We're revisiting the conditions of approval.
It's the permanent.
It's the, we're revisiting the conditions of approval with regards to truck deliveries.
So if there's any complaints, any complaints, you have the right to pull or not create what they're asking. And so I just wanted to throw that out. The other thing that bothers me the most about this whole thing is that people aren't working together. This is a neighborhood issue. And I am a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I got the email. You know, it didn't feel like the two groups were sitting down and, or somebody was trying to mediate the issue. So I wanted to throw that out there. The third item is that I'm a nurse. If your sleep is affected, I don't care what it is, you know, it's your quality of life, as you've mentioned in the staff report, which I appreciate you bringing that up. So, so you have a lot to deal with tonight on how you're going to sort this out. My gut is that perhaps you need a continuance to see if people can come back to the table to work it out. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Lanes Breg. I'm at seventeen Bell Avenue, um, in the East Fairfax Neighborhood Group. Um, and I was on the planning commission for ten years and chair for probably, what, eight years or something. And I think that is, that rule is true that Pam just mentioned. Um, I have so many things that I, I just want to hit on here. Um, the people who have been coming up and talking who don't live next to the store have a completely different view of it, but the store does border a residential neighborhood. People's health is affected, are affected. All kinds of people are affected. And, um, I presented some articles at these meetings last year. This is a new one, um, out of London, but they say that, um, heart disease, diabetes, obesity, and poor brain function have all been linked to substandard sleep. And this was a, a study where they found that over seven hundred genes were altered by the, the shift of not having enough sleep. Each contains the instructions for building a protein, so those that become more active produce more proteins, changing the chemistry of the body. And it goes on, um, about areas such as the immune system and how the body responds to damage and stress were affected. So essentially, the genes are not replacing themselves in the way they need to for optimum performance. And having that store, and it's not five AM, it's not four AM, I have sent emails to Al and copied the whole council at three fifteen AM, so it can come at any time. And I want to know if you're talking about a six AM, or if I would prefer, and I can tell you several reasons why, seven AM seems to be the magic number, but I would prefer seven AM. And, uh, it, it's damaging us. It's hurting people. They don't care about the health of their neighbors. It is a health food store. It does employ about two-hundred-and-fifty employees and, and I like that store and I shop there. I'm, it's so convenient for me. Um, the employees all, by the way, get incentives not to park in the, in the parking lot at Good Earth. So we still have people parking in our neighborhood, even though signs have gone up. If you look at the community agreement in your packet that was developed after a, a meeting shortly before the store opened, uh, I was, I have a question for staff. The traffic elements of that community agreement, are they up for discussion tonight?
The parts that were, the responsibility of the town to implement are not part of the discussion tonight.
Okay, so what I want to know, and, and also the, the noise ordinance has been changed since this time. Um, so that's impossible to enforce. And I think maybe Steve can speak more fluently about that.
Actually, if I can clarify, the noise ordinance has not been changed. We have adopted a general plan that includes a noise element.
Mm-hmm.
And we will be revisiting, in fact, we are partially revisiting it in another item tonight with regards to leaf blowers
Right.
and powered equipment. And we will be at a later date looking at the zoning ordinance and the rest of the town code even more comprehensively as time permits out into the future. But with the noise ordinance is in place, the existing noise element that was adopted in April last year in the general plan is a very thorough analysis of the difficulties of dealing with urban environments with noise. of dealing with urban environments with noise. It's a very good read, I recommend everybody try to digest that. And we will be looking at the noise ordinance more comprehensively in the future, but we haven't changed it yet.
Okay, well, in that case, it's still 7:00, the intent of the ordinance is to have peace and quiet in town between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And it's an enforcement problem. There's no way to enforce, other than maybe putting chains or gates or something on the driveways that go into the Good Earth to keep the trucks out at night, because it is hurting people. Whole Foods and Mill Valley both have 8:00 PM delivery times for their large trucks. And the argument that, that we in the neighborhood knew what we were getting when we moved in, we, I was there when Albertsons were there, and they didn't have 30 trucks a day coming in. And it wasn't a problem. This is like a food imporium, it's not just a supermarket. Several restaurants, I mean, I'm sure everybody's been in there, they know what a zoo it is in there. And it's good for business, and it's a great store. But I don't see any reason why they couldn't stock at night, really. And they are open at 9:00 AM, I believe, the reports said they're open at 8:00 AM. And I'd like also to see the gate, if they do a gate, to go to design review. Okay? And that's all I have about this. And I would be interested in seeing the new noise element. Is that going to be open to a public meeting?
The new noise element in the general plan that was adopted in April last year is on the town's website, and there's one at the counter, and there's also one at the library.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ted Pugh, 105 Roker Drive. My work involves management consulting for retail companies and shopping center owners, and I've been doing it for many years. In my experience, I've done several supermarkets. They've been back keys before I came to California, but nevertheless, they all had the same issues when it came to deliveries. One was a 60-some-thousand-square-foot Safeway in Washington DC in the middle of a residential neighborhood. The other one was in New Jersey. It's a large AMP, it was over 60,000 square feet. And the issue they always had was how many deliveries and at what time? Same thing as here. But I sense that these folks at the Good Earth are kind of between a rock and a hard place, because when you're a Safeway, or you're an AMP, or you're any other large company like an Albertsons, the delivery situation that you have to sometimes work out with the different places you situate your stores are all negotiated. And if you're a big guy, you can tell a trucker if they're going to deliver $400 million worth of goods over a period of a year to your stores, what to do. I'm not so sure these guys have that kind of leverage. And if we're dealing just with one truck, and it's 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock in the morning, then what was raised earlier as to the technical solutions to the problem might just be the best way out. So for example, when a thing like that backs up and makes all the racket, the only reason those systems are put in to safeguard people who might get run over is because you usually have a single driver. So if you can get a staff member, for example, from the store to come out and monitor, you can flick the switch off, shut the thing off, and you can get somebody to monitor the truck as it's backing up, no big deal. Same thing when you go to do the unloading, you shut the thing off, you don't have even an idling engine. When I walk by the Good Earth store five days a week, 6:00 in the morning, the biggest racket I've heard is from the sanitary people collecting the garbage. And as I understand it, those folks are not supposed to be there that early in the morning, so that can be rectified as well. It's a lot of noise they make. So one way or the other, if it's just one truck, it may be a technical solution. One way or the other, also, I think you might want to consider that whatever mitigation and decisions made on this use permit, maybe it could be best to consider maybe another six months or so to monitor it a bit more, and then you just, you kick a can down the road a little bit, but for good reason, and just see how things work out at that point. I think you all will come up with a nifty solution. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Stephen Franks, and I live at 19 Willow Avenue. And I've got too much information going on here in my little brain to comprehend some facts. I've grown up in that neighborhood, I was born and raised up there and do know a lot about the grocery business. I've been in it for quite a few years, 30 years. And trying to, trying to look at apples to apples, I mean, everybody's saying it is challenging to figure out grocery stores and times and deliveries, and, you know, there's so much to say here. Good Earth, yes, I do think it's fantastic for the neighborhood, I think they're a great fit, absolutely. I don't think, I gotta, talking to many people over in the neighborhood, and there's really not too many people that are against Good Earth, you know, everybody's for Good Earth. It's not a matter of, "We hate the place," or anything like that. Trying to, so that's a positive thing. Everybody that signed my petition that I started, and it, just a couple hours, and that we started, they're all for it, you know, nobody's against Good Earth, it's not a bad place. But everybody that signed that says, has said to me, and they agree with me 100%, as I was walking up here tonight, a guy yelled at me, he goes, "Go, Steve, go," you know. 5:00 AM, when a huge truck like that rolls in, there's a lot of different noises. I love the gentleman's last, that was up here before me, said, "Hey, six months from now, let's kick the can down the road, let's take a look at it. Let's work together and make this thing work." Unfortunately, that didn't work several months ago with Al and I at November meeting, the noises continued for a long time after there was a promise and so forth. And it's hard to make a deal when deals are not kept. So I'm all for deals and shaking hands and having a gentleman's, you know, words on it, if they can follow that. And there are, and there also are police reports that they have not followed what they have been given for the last year as far as the use permit. So it's a real challenge. If you're not following the rules that you guys are laying out, everybody's laying out, and a company comes in and does whatever they, does not follow the rules, then that's a big issue, that's a problem. For me to try and call somebody up on the phone and say, "Guys, there's a problem here, let's stop this problem, the delivery's at 3:00 in the morning, it's not, it shouldn't be okay, it is not okay for a residential neighborhood, 4:00's not okay, 5:00's a challenge." I am, you know, our neighborhood, our group is willing to work with somebody, Good Earth, if the owners can re-shake a hand again and back it up and do what they say they're going to do, I don't have a problem with that, that's fine, you know, it's just hard to not do that. I've been in the grocery business, apples for apples, grocery stores, United and Scotty's are very similar with residential neighborhoods, that's what I'm trying to do here and not bring in the Fairfax market, there's no neighbors that are close by, as close as they are as Scotty's Market, Terreton, and United Market San Somo. And that's what I believe apples for apples are, and I think it's a pretty good indication of volume and so forth. United's been there for 50 years, Scotty's been there for 50 years. It's working with the neighbors and making something that works, you know. I mean, it's not impossible to do, but it is air brakes, it is, the delivery people are not, they don't care about my sleep, you know. I'm not saying the owners don't care about the neighborhood at all, you know, they do. But the delivery people that are dropping off that load don't know me or care about me, you know, it's just that simple. And I've talked to the delivery drivers, they drop off at Good Earth, and then they drop down at our store after 7:00. And I've talked to the drivers, you know, and they get a good laugh, you know, it's, I'm taking pictures of them, being there 4:00 in the morning when they're not supposed to. And I'm trying to police something without any backing, you know, I don't have a bat, you know, I don't have a badge or anything. So, I don't know, I'm almost at the point, you know, just, I've got so much information, but I'm just kind of rambling on. So people that stand up here and talk about it, it's easy for them up in Cascade Canyon to come down here in a car, wherever the guy's from, and state that he's been in the business and knows what's going on a little bit, but it's different when you're living there and you have to deal with that noise every morning. So, you know, I have always been open to rules. I believe that the benefit, I absolutely believe that Good Earth will not fail if they get a delivery starting at 6:00 AM. It will not change their whole way of doing business. It will, like I say, it will benefit them when more trucks come in there, it'll benefit the neighborhood when more trucks come in after 6:00 AM. Before that, it's a challenge. They have not been able to, they don't have chains across the parking lot, which was a great idea, what United does, open the chains, trucks come in, and are respectful, no backup beepers, like I've stated before. It's something, like I say, you guys, the rules have to be followed, we have to come up with some rules that work for everybody. And in a business, you know, the profit margin on a business is tough, absolutely. But I'm saying that there's businesses that have been there for 50 years locally, they are San and Somo, United Market is a local market, they do, you know, they're very similar volume-wise, they work a crew, I don't know volume-wise, I shouldn't say that, but they do have a big volume they have for years. And they do make it work without any problems. There hasn't been glitches there over the years with the neighbors, there has been here and there. Albertsons, when that was open, it's different. I lived in the same house when Albertsons was open, and the deliveries did not come at 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning. I know that for a fact, you know, and I too, I worked with, I was talking to a guy yesterday, and he worked there in 1977 at Lucky's, he started his career, and I've worked with him for many years. I worked with a guy in the produce department at Scotty's Market that worked at that store and knows a lot about it and deliveries, and they weren't there at 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning. So the volume's huge, but any questions? I mean, I don't want to ramble on.
Well, I want to make sure we're able to get everybody in, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Haskell, 25 Glen Drive. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and I also, I'm a Northern California representative for a solar company, so I have two points. One deals with aesthetics, equipment on roofs. There is a longstanding tradition that roofs are fairly clean and don't have things on them. That tradition is fundamentally being changed and challenged. And I believe that there's any kind of aesthetic notion that we'd rather have large cooling towers made from nuclear energy, they would certainly make the, anything on the roof look very tame. And I think our aesthetic qualities that you as planning commissioners need to take into consideration that there is a lot of things that are going on roofs, because roofs is our access to our renewable energy resource. So that's one point. Secondly, with regards to the, your dilemma, do we regulate business and how to perform, or do we work with business? Do we create prescriptions dictating what they're supposed to do, or do we set performance standards that we allow them to perform to those standards? You've had a great deal of good input from many good people, all good-hearted. And I know that it's a very dangerous thing to start prescribing to businesses how to perform and how to maintain their own productivity and how to maintain their own profit and how to run their business. And I do notice that the grocery industry has fundamentally changed. Everything's running 24/7 now, it seems like a 24/7 world. And although our smaller thing is not suggesting, but I believe it is time for us to look at performance standards, not prescription. If the issue is noise, then the issue of noise should be mitigated. There's some very good comments being made here. I think there's so much goodwill from everybody involved to remediate the problem, that it would be a mistake today to try to prescribe how Good Earth is to perform their business. Set the standards by all means, set the performance by all means. But I would really think that telling them how to run their business would be inappropriate. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Could I get a raise of hand just in case, we're getting close to the end, just making sure? Okay.
Sherrod Bogentin, Walsh Lane. I just want to speak in support of supporting Good Earth's delivery needs. I think Good Earth is one of the town's greatest assets. And I do understand being waked up, I have a rooster in my neighborhood, it really is very aggravating, I know that, but I just think Good Earth is so valuable and has invested so much in our town and added to the beautification, and I think we should not thwart any of their endeavors and help them however we can. And I hope that the neighbors and Good Earth can sit down and work this out together. It seems like maybe a chain across the entryway or something can be worked out, something that will be satisfactory to everybody, because I just, I think that we should make sure that Good Earth succeeds and help them however we can. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'm not seeing anybody else from the public that has anything to say, so I think we'll bring it back to the commission.
I have a question for staff. I've heard, seen in letters allegations about deliveries prior to 5:00 and complaints, and I didn't see anything in the package, perhaps I missed it, I was just wondering if it's something I missed.
Marcus, our building officials here tonight can give you a rundown on the statistics.
Yeah, we were asked to monitor the trucks starting on July 13th through 2012. And during that time, there have been verified that there's been approximately, or exactly 24 violations. The last verified violation was on January 5th of this year.
And the nature of those violations, were they coming before 5:00?
Before 5:00 in the morning.
So much before, or a few minutes before? Just a general sense?
Some of them were early in the very beginning, but later on, it was closer to 5:00. There were some truck overages where they were only allowed to have-
Have one truck, but they would have two trucks, so that would be considered a violation. They wouldn't, they weren't there before 5:00, but they had more trucks than they were allowed to have.
And was there a lot of idling as they were waiting to get in, or while they were unloading, were they continuing to idle?
The police just verified that the number of trucks that were there.
Okay, thank you.
You know, just to add, I mean, I've called-
So you have to go to the public? Yeah, we've closed the public, so I think this, we've asked the town staff to-
Then I've called after January's, but maybe the police don't write it down, but they definitely have been called.
Thank you. One other, I guess, I work with a lot of truckers through my job doing enforcement for the Air District and deal with a lot of truckers through the Port of Oakland and Bay Area. It's very difficult to control truckers, I know that. And also, I would be very concerned, just one point, about putting a chain, which may work at United, but I could also see truckers just hanging out in the neighborhoods, idling. There's a real tendency to do that, so a couple things, I just want to throw out a couple of comments to the commission, is I heard a couple of what I thought were really good ideas from members of the public about, number one, maybe having the neighbors and Good Earth really sit down for the next couple of months and really try to work out a solution. It sounds like there's a start with removing the beepers from the 5:00 AM truck, also potentially the 6:00 AM trucks. I like the idea that was thrown out about having a staff member monitor. Now, I realize a staff member can't tell a trucker what to do, and some of those truckers probably aren't the most courteous people. But if they want to do business with you, it sounds like they might be willing to work with you. Another idea was potentially, in my mind, because it sounds like there have been discussions, but maybe they haven't really always been agreed to, or maybe there hasn't been a common understanding of what those discussions have been.
Clarify on that point?
Yeah, I was going to suggest maybe some more formal type of mediation to come to agreement, but go ahead.
Well, Ms. Steve, I don't want to call him Mr. Franks, Steve, made it, I mean, came here in November, and really, since then is when the effort really started for us, trying to control the noise. And not until that point, although there, I think there were some calls that sporadically came to the business, they didn't quite reach me. But I, you know, I apologized back then to Steve for being, you know, MIA, or all of us, MIA, at dealing with, and Lane Two, that trucks were arriving between 3:00 and 5:00 AM, like we had for 13 or 12 years up the street here, all summer long last year. So, you know, I started the effort at dealing- at dealing with in Lane Two, that trucks were arriving between 3:00 and 5:00 AM, like we had for 13 or 12 years up the street here, all summer long last year. So, you know, I started the effort at dealing with truckers in November. It took six weeks to get everybody on board and, you know, written emails from transportation managers that they are on board and have done enough to make sure, make sure and assure us that we won't have anybody arrive by 5:00. But there are the rare cases where that even gets violated too. I don't know of a truck after January 1st showing up before 5:00 AM, except for one, that we turned away and they came back at 7:00. So I'm in, we are in full control of playing by the rules today. There is, you know, if I need to hear more, maybe getting together with the community would help me understand where else we're breaking the rules, but I'm not aware of it. Until I received, I got a copy of Bob Mellon's letter, I didn't know there was anybody, truly anybody else besides Steve up the hill Willow bothered by us until this week.
Well, I think that-
I welcome, you know, and I've had a communication with Bob, and-
Is he still here?
I think he's in the back.
Okay. I do, I did have a communication with Bob this week, a little back and forth. And I do appreciate the working together. I think he represents that viewpoint too. So I, I'm encouraged by that.
So I think it, just my thoughts that I'm pointing out to the commission is, it sounds like we have some parties who have been not vocal, now are vocal, interested in working together potentially on a solution. It does sound like it might be appropriate to give us more time, to give the group more time to really work out a solution. And also consider things like maybe having a hotline for people to call when they see things, so that you can jump on it. Because it, since you, from what you just said, paying the personal attention to it got people's attention. I personally like that your people are not stocking those shelves all night. I think that the store has a great feel. I'm in and out of town really early in the morning. So I don't see a lot of activity. I'm there before your store opens. But I like the idea of trying to control it to hours that are more reasonable. Because the CEQA document had the 5:00 for the first truck, I'd like to see if there would be some way to at least stay within that and try to work out some of these solutions that, I've heard really good ideas from members of the public tonight.
Yeah, and I have too, and I appreciate that. And I also, I'll add lastly, that, you know, I'm interested in knowing, you know, specifically what happens on our property that wakes people up versus it being a highway zone in the morning. I mean, I've spent many mornings down there very early, and I'm dumbfounded by the amount of noise besides our property. So I don't, I, you know, there should be in our conversation with the community, a fair analysis of what the noise is, where the noise is coming from. There's, I worry that there's noise being caused, trucks stopping at the light, rearing up, going west, going up the hill, buses, same thing, trucks and buses coming down, going eastward on Sir Francis Drake, stopping, garbage trucks, you know, zipping around town, street cleaners zipping around town, one loud muffler going through town. I mean, there's so many things that could be affecting this neighborhood, that I want to make sure that we aren't being hung out to deal with all those too.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think as we're delivering, I think one of, I think we've heard, I've heard a lot about, and I'm encouraged by the level of communication. I think we've recently dealt with a situation of 24-hour operation and noise. And we know how sensitive and concerning that is. So, you know, we don't take, we don't take it lightly. I do think it's important, and Commissioner Coler pointed it out, this, it doesn't matter what happened at the last store. This store went through a process for a use permit that was a public process. It was in, was it an EIR? I mean, there was a noise element. It was mitigated NAGDEC, but there was a full public process. That's, those are the rules of operation. So it doesn't matter whether any other town, any other businesses have use permits that are tied to sound. This, this application went through this process. It was a public process, and this is what we came up with. So what I'm saying is that it doesn't matter if, in the past, deliveries happened at 3:00 or 4:00, if any other business in town doesn't have any requirements for limitations to delivery. There is something in place, and there has been a process. So I think we're, we're also certain, certainly looking to be faithful to that. So, I mean, as we're discussing that, I do, I agree. That's, that's sort of the, the ground level is, is what was already looked at. I would be interested in hearing from staff, if, has, have you been asked to be engaged in any of these discussions? Has it been, you know, directed by council that the neighbors can work it out, or have they sort of brought you in on this?
There was some discussion when Mr. Franks became, came before the council, if my memory serves me correctly, to get together. And I believe that happened between Al and Steve, and there was some discussions. Yes, but-
But in terms of the, your involvement, you haven't sort of been brought in to-
Well, we did, we did, we did send letters after the November appearance. And when subsequent complaints came in, we did send letters to the Good Earth advising them that the violation was continuing. And then we actually had a sit-down meeting, and it was helpful to hear more of their side of things. But we continued to stay on making sure that the rules were understood and trying to enforce them. But outside of that, we have not been involved with any mitigation. Can I volunteer another point? If I hear the sort of the temperature of the planning commission at this point, it sounds like you're, you've sort of have exhausted the other issues that we went in the first half of this, and you may be ready to make a motion on that. With regards to this, if I read your temperature correctly, and tell me if I'm wrong, you're not going in the direction of staff's recommendation at this point? And you're not going in the direction of what the applicant is asking for in terms of relaxing it? So if you wanted to move on the other parts of what's before you tonight, you could rule on, it sounds like you're sort of leaning towards staff's recommendations on the other physical parts of the issue. And an easy way to move through the work that's included in the recommended findings, the fence height variance and the conditions of, recommended conditions, you could instruct staff to redact reference to the truck deliveries. And then that issue would be tabled, and you could then recommend that the community and the applicant meet. You could also direct us, if they're interested in us becoming involved, to try to sit down with them and, and work through these issues also.
One question of the applicant. I think you're sensing my temperature. Is, I wonder if, if, if we moved in that direction and gave you and your partner more time to work with the greater community, not just Mr. Franks, but the larger group that's more recently come forward, would it be appropriate or acceptable to think about doing something more formal, like a formal mediation, to come up with an agreement that you could bring, so that we wouldn't, we would have more acceptance of an agreed-upon plan?
So the question is formal mitigation help?
Formal mediation, something like that.
Well, I, I mean, I open up to the other half of the room that's in opposition. I mean, I, I don't know if it's needed. I mean, I would offer, let's get together. I mean, it was, Bob encouraged me to knock on some, knock on some doors up there and, and try to feel the temperature of folks. And I guess what I'm looking for, I would be looking for, is beyond what I've heard, they're happy with the store, but they don't want us operating so early. Then what is it that we're causing? So, you know, the specifics of what we could be doing, what, how we could be doing it better. So I just don't know if we need professional mediation. There's a-
Add one other thing. You could also direct staff to bring back the compliance issue and the impact on the neighborhood after, say, a six-month period, whether or not there's been any relief from the noise impact within the parameters that already exist. You could direct us to bring this issue back to you, because we can revisit the conditions of approval.
Just, I'll stop. But I was just going to say, that seems like a good thing to happen in parallel. But whatever process, either informal or something, I would hate to see us kick the can down the road for six months and end up with just a compliance, you know, the rate of compliance, and then still so, so much emotion and so much concern on both sides. I would hope that in parallel, and perhaps staff could participate in some of those meetings, to at least hear more about what the issues are from a non-biased view, that hopefully in six months, if that's the appropriate timeframe, we could have, you know, a more accepting, acceptable proposal, that more people would be willing to support.
Yeah, I think we've heard a lot about potential mitigations, but I think, given the circumstance, we would want to know that they're functional mitigations, that they actually could work. We've had lots of discussions about beepers on equipment. I didn't know you could turn those off. I thought they're a requirement for safety purposes, and they're not discretionary. So those are the kinds of things where, you know, in the staff report, it talks about a different tone or something like that, which isn't turning it off. So there's a lot of, I guess, unanswered questions. And what I'm hearing is not, when you're asking that question, it's to understand what could be done to reduce the impact, as opposed to, well, is it idling? I think idling came up early on and really hasn't been discussed. And I think there's questions around idling. You know, I agree, like a chain, there's no control over the drivers. They're gonna, they're gonna go wherever they want. I guess, the other questions would be whether, is there a way to actually go out and, and pick up, as opposed to have that one truck come in? You know, those, it's just exploring those ideas. I mean, I think of Good Earth as, as being that store that can say, this is what we want. And I know you'd love to be there down the road, but, 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 you know, it seems like the biggest thing.
Trucks are not allowed to idling.
Right.
Have a dock.
Yeah. So, so, and I think what would be helpful is, is sort of approaching it in that formal way. These, these are the limitations. These are the operations. These are mitigations that have been identified specifically for these purposes, so that it can be understood by everybody. Because I think we can have these conversations and, you know, everybody has a different point of reference right now.
Yeah, I mean, the specific noise that's generated from the delivery is what I'm looking to understand. So if it's not a backup beeper on that truck that's waking anybody up, what is it? And we know, I mean, I've, we've, I've helped identify, you know, what the other things could be. It's an air brake. You know, that's a second, that's two seconds of time. You know, there, maybe there's a, there's a lift gate, you know, there, there could be others. You know, I hope it's not conversation, because we, and I know it's not idling, idling. We have very, you know, trained folk who know about the issues on the dock. I don't get 100% buy-in from all the truckers, but it's not too far from that. I mean, we are, I'm not in a position like the gentleman back east described. I can't dictate everything. But we're in, we can control things. We're a major player for the companies that are servicing us. And I have confidence, and I've had success at controlling it. So, and specifically, what is it? Maybe the first meeting, there is a sound engineer at the meeting that can help identify not only what the causes of noise are, how noise travels, but how to mitigate it. That might make sense to me.
And I, I think what I'm hearing is that, or what I'm trying to get out there is, that it's important to get everybody on the same page through a hearing that actually talks about those things, as opposed to try to jump to something tonight where we would then be guessing at it, and nobody would have any sense whatsoever about what the potential benefits are. I will say, sound actually travels much better uphill. So, you know, I think probably when we were going through this, everybody was looking across the street and not up Willow, up that valley. And I think, you know, those are just those things that you learn as you, as you push a little bit farther forward. So I think what, certainly haven't heard from you guys, so.
It's okay. Well, one question I had is, is do we have a sense of that catchment area of noise around the Good Earth? How many residential units and what the population is that's being affected?
We haven't seen this, the petition or studied it yet.
Part of my question was, was on that truck noise. You know, how long is it? What are the types of noise? Are the, the doors going up and things? I've been a resident here for close to five years now. When I first moved in, the trash trucks started down my hill at 4:30 in the morning, and it would get to my house about 4:45. So being a planner, I called the sanitary district, and they said they're not supposed to enter residential neighborhoods until 6:00 o'clock. And I said, well, they're coming in at 4:45, and they're waking up my three-year-old and waking up my husband. And now I have a grumpy kid and a grumpy husband all day, and something needs to be done. And so it got rerouted. Although we are actually one of the earlier communities in the sanitary district where we allow trash trucks. So I feel the pain for the people with, it doesn't matter if it lasts 30 seconds or three and a half minutes, unless you're the sleeper that can go back to sleep. When it hits, if it's at 5:00 AM, you're up at 5:00 AM, and, and your day is kind of shot. And now with school kids, when the trash trucks do sneak in early, I'm on the phone the next day, my kids are grumpy, and they don't do as well in school, and they don't do as well in homework. So, so I mean, I get that side of it. I get the side of the business, that we want to run a business. Good Earth brings jobs and a tax base and workers who live in other towns who spend their dollars in our town. So we want to definitely look at the big picture of keeping a business happy and efficient and profitable and long-term and sustainable. But we have residents that don't want to necessarily be up and put in earplugs at 5:00 in the morning. So getting back to this mitigation, if there's a way that we can come up with solutions instead of mandating, you know, 5:00 is early. 5:00 is early for a lot of people. 6:00 may be more tolerable, and I heard 7:00. But if we could come up with ways to really reduce some of that noise between landscaping and other tools, and then study it for six months and see if that mitigates a lot of it, it seems like a step in the right direction.
I think we heard a lot of good suggestions, and I think it would be beneficial for the two parties to get together and try to work something out. And-
Make a motion.
Yeah, and I, I think that Jim's proposal was good, that we should go ahead and approve the items related to the, the building permit and the occupant, the occupancy permit, and then continue the, the noise, the truck and noise for later date.
So I do, I think what, I want to take some lessons learned from our last efforts when we asked for, you know, let's try this for six months and see and understand it. So I think it really is important to have staff involved in some way. And, and the way I think it's important is when, if mitigations are proposed, that there's a strong understanding and incorporation of that into that report. So it's not just the handshake, yeah, this will work, but it actually becomes part and relevant to, to the use permit. Because I think that's a really important part of it.
At the risk of giving us more tasks in our understaffed department, if you recall what happened at, at the final hour, when the use permit and design review had already gone through the planning commission and the traffic impact report and the initial study mitigated NAGDEC, those elements of the environmental review, came up to the town council. That's when we heard from the neighborhood that they were concerned about the number of trucks in the morning, among other issues, that we, we actually had a meeting on a Saturday morning in the 11th hour in this room. It was facilitated by myself, and we did hammer out those additional mitigation measures that went into the mitigated NAGDEC and the monitoring plan. So if I hear your temperature or feel your temperature again, I would volunteer that if Good Earth wants to continue to pursue relaxing the requirements on the trucks, and if you want staff to delve deeper into whether or not it continues to recommend- it continues to recommend restricting the one truck before 5, or during the 5:00 hour and relaxing more trucks after 6:00, that we should do a more thorough investigation vis-à-vis this neighborhood discussion, that would be a plausible way to go. It's sort of round two of the community meeting, and I would be happy to facilitate it.
And, and I did hear Good Earth say that, I won't try to interpret right now, sorry. I heard that there, in, in terms of discussion about the rest of it, I think the only question I have, and, and I didn't bring up the fence with the idea of trying to use that as the screening, it was more of an open question. So, I'm, I'm comfortable either way. I mean, I could see redwood trees being planted all the way up that slope, too. I mean, it doesn't have to be a fence. Those redwoods kind of go to a point and then they end. I'm talking about the, I'm, I'm just trying to, because the fence came up during our discussions about the other things, non-delivery.
Right. And that was beyond the scope of what's being proposed. It was really the screening of the equipment on the lower deck. And then, we're in support of granting the variance for how the existing fence was built.
To where it is and not, not addressing anything beyond that.
Correct. It's not, it's not on your docket at this point.
Right, right. So, so if there's, somebody wants to try to craft a motion.
Let me just ask one more question. So, if we're gonna split this, and, so, the items on page seven, the delivery issues on, they start at the top of page seven, correct?
Actually, if you look on page five, six, item six, that's under the design review, but it does talk about the truck delivery. So, you redact item six on page six and you redact item one under recommended conditions on page seven.
Okay. So, it's, so if we look at, for everyone who's not following this as closely as Jim is, under the design review recommended findings, item six, we would remove
Correct.
The last sentence, which says restricting delivery vehicles to after, we just take that whole sentence out?
The whole, the whole item six, it's...
Whole item six.
Correct. And the same with item one under recommended conditions on page seven.
Yeah, one through three.
No, no, just one under recommended conditions.
Just one. Okay, see, not very helpful tonight. Okay, we remove item one from recommended conditions and item six from the recommended findings.
And may, can we just blanket, I mean, i- is it appropriate to make a motion that's to, to continue the delivery issue and just, is that enough? Or do we have to actually redact everything in background and the delivery vehicle section and all of that? We'll just, we'll, I think if we just continue it, right? Continue that part, portion of it? Because you talked about redacting everything related to...
Just, just, just redacts the language, making a decision in staff's direction.
Only in the findings and conditions, not in the background or any of the other stuff. Okay.
You can direct staff, without getting involved with revisions to the recommended findings or conditions of approval, to bring the item of the truck delivery protocol vis-à-vis the conditions of approval back in six months.
Okay. And then I have one question. Under the recommended conditions, Linda earlier mentioned that she had a verbal item four.
Yes, yeah.
And what was that? Because I didn't get that all down.
It was that conditions two, three, and four be complied with before the project has issued their final occupancy permit.
Okay, wait a minute. How can you say two, three, and four?
I meant, well, it should only say two and three.
So, two and three...
So, the equipment be screened and that the location of the rolling gate, if they decide to go forward with the rolling gate, be approved by the fire department and the police department prior to their, being issued a final occupancy permit.
And so, how does the delivery play into that?
Well, you've continued that. So, that, you're gonna review and revisit in six months.
So, they could have the final occupancy without that being resolved?
Yeah. I mean, they, they have temp, they have conditional occupancy right now. So, they're operating and it would just continue.
As a conditional occupant? I guess that's, if, if the delivery isn't resolved, is it a conditional occupancy permit still? Or would it be really a final?
You could finalize the, the design details, which were the modifications to the conditions of approval. You're not actually taking any action with the requested change from either direction on the truck delivery. That is, the condition of approval stays in place. So, you, you would be directing staff to revisit the success or failure of the conditions of approval vis-à-vis the truck delivery schedule in six months' time.
Yeah, I, I don't think staff, I hope I'm not misspeaking. Staff didn't want to tie up the occupancy issue with the truck deliveries. That was, we just wanted the design issue, the design changes to be finished so that all the construction issues were dealt with.
Right.
The, the delivery issue is part of the mitigated negative declaration and doesn't need to be tied to occupancy. I mean, they're in there occupying.
Yeah, I, I think we just, it's important for the public to know that it's not, I mean, it's a final, but it doesn't mean that the discussion about the deliveries down the road doesn't carry weight and have, have an effect. So...
Okay, so, for purpose of, of making this motion, I'm gonna try to restate it with help, probably. So, I'd like to make a recommendation that we approve, well, first, that we approve the recommended findings, redacting item six from design review, redacting item one from the recommended conditions, adding a new item three, because item two and three now become one and two, that would say, and Linda, I'd like you to restate it.
That conditions one and two shall be complied with before the project has issued a final occupancy permit.
Okay, that, that's, and that we would continue the truck delivery issue for six months from today? Or six months from today occurring on the next planning commission meeting? That's my motion.
I, I think six months is too long to wait. I, I think the public is, is frustrated. I think we'd want to try to move that window up, maybe three months.
Well, I would suggest having sat through a, something that was different but had similar ramifications, that six months was a good frame of time. However, in that case, we didn't have staff participating. And so, I think to give people time to really understand the issues, I would recommend we stay with the six months. But, I'll defer to the rest of the commission.
And we will, I hope, all be working in concert to stay within the parameters of the existing conditions of approval with regards to truck deliveries during that six months. And I think I'm hearing a spirit of cooperation to see if we can get, dig down into what are the noise issues with regards to what's happening in that 5:00 hour.
And, and maybe they figure it out soon and we, maybe in three months they come back anyway, so.
Yeah, or sooner.
It's, it's giving the option, opportunity for it.
So, we're leaving six months as kind of the outside window, but it could come soon.
Within six months.
That's good, that's good. So, that's my motion.
So, there's a motion and...
I second.
Okay. I thi, I think we always want to be careful that we've revised numbers even though we've removed, so. But, just double-check that on the minutes. So, we have a motion in a second. We'll just do a roll call vote since there's only four.
Aye.
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 Aye. So, the approval of many of the conditions passes, there, there still is an appeal period on that, right? Or...
That's correct. 10 days.
Yeah, so there's, there's a 10-day appeal period, and that would be on the items that are not related to delivery, any of the other items tonight. And then, hopefully, things move, move quicker and we're able to find a resolution. So, thank you.
Thank you.
How are we doing? Do, do we want to take a brief break?
Yes.
Yes. We're gonna take a five-minute break and look for our other colleagues. We'll reconvene, reconvene at five minutes of. All right, so, bring it back to order. It's 10:00. So, we'll do our best to move quickly. So, I think we are ready for the staff report on the, on the ordinance regarding leaf blowers and/or power equipment.
I have the minutes.
I know, but she wouldn't...
I relinquish.
She can't hear. She's cold. I don't know.
Try to wake up again, you guys.
So, what are we talking about here?
You've got to be outside with the minutes first.
The minutes.
I gave my agenda to her, so.
I don't know what I did.
No, I, I stole it.
My agenda that I saw, even though I wasn't here, was that my name wasn't on it as having out feeling it. And I felt that was a subtle hint.
My name's spelled incorrect.
Joan, are you getting all this?
No, I haven't got the minutes in front of me. I'm sorry. And I don't know how you managed to go on it.
March 21st.
March 21st.
I wasn't present, but I noticed my name wasn't on the wasn't present list.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I figured you were gonna be a town council.
You were busy.
I was missing.
You were busy.
Yeah, but I wasn't, but I wasn't here. I remember that.
Thank you, Ms. Sappert.
Oh, and it, you could have been at our meeting. We were sitting in the little room over there.
Oh, I know.
All of us.
I'm sorry, you, you were not on, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Well, not really.
I thought it was okay. I just thought you were giving me a hint.
No, I, I look at these things and I look, checked it all three times. I don't know why I bother. Still miss something.
And then my name is actually two Z's instead of two S's. But the other half's all right, and that rarely happens.
Oh, so it's two C's. I copied that carefully down for something, too.
No worries. Changed my name to Jones.
Oh, okay.
Any other modifications to the minutes?
That wasn't bad.
Is there a motion to approve? By somebody who was there?
I make a motion to approve the planning commission minutes from March 21st, noting the change of Barbara Coler and misspelling of my name.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed? So, now, we're onto discussion items. So, we'd love to hear, we missed you last, last time, during our discussion. We missed you at the last meeting, so.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I was sick and...
Yeah.
So, at any rate, we included your last staff report, just giving you more background. We also provided you with a report.
Jim, button, button.
Thank you. Getting late. So, you have, in terms of background tonight, the report from last month. You also have the report from the Air Resources Board titled, "A Report to the California Legislature on the Potential Health and Environmental Impacts of Leaf Blowers," and that's Exhibit B. And as Commissioner Coler pointed out in the interim, that that's a little bit of a dated report. Nonetheless, you wanted it, you got it. And also, there was a follow-up letter to the individual that came and spoke at the last meeting, and that was attached to your back. Actually, I think it was two parts, that her husband and her provided something. So, and I also wanted to call your attention under discussion here to the new noise element that was brought up during the public comment in the last item. And thank you, Commissioner Coler, again, for having read the general plan cover to cover and peaking my memory that within goal N3, in the noise element, it, which is called under goal N3, "Maintain the Current Quality of the Acoustical Environment," it lists representatives, a representative list of standard controls. Now, it didn't say, "Thou shalt adopt these standard controls." It put out there in a very benign fashion so that you have discretion on how you may or may not update or amend the noise ordinance, which I would remind you is in the health and safety section of the code, not the zoning ordinance of the code, but we're still tasked in my department to amend. So, those, as you see here, for the benefit of the public tonight, under A, it actually talks about limiting construction in town from 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Saturday, excuse me, Monday through Friday, and from 9:00 to 5:00, an hour later start on Saturday, and no construction on Sunday. I'll come back to that in just a moment, if I may. And B, control noise from construction workers' radios to the point where they are not audible to existing residents that border the project site. C, equip all internal combustion engine-driven equipment with mufflers which are in good condition and appropriate for the equipment. D, utilize quiet models of air compressors and other stationary noise sources where technology exists. E, locate stationary noise generating equipment as far as possible from sensitive receptors when sensitive receptors adjoin or are near a construction project area. F, prohibit unnecessary idling of internal combustion engines. G, notify residents adjacent to a project site of the construction schedule in writing. And finally, H, designate a noise disturbance coordinator who would be responsible for responding to any local complaints about construction noise. The disturbance coordinator would be, would determine the cause of the noise complaints, e.g., starting too early, bad muffler, and institute reasonable measures warranted to correct the problem. Conspiciously post a telephone number for the disturbance coordinator at a construction site. And that concludes the representative list of standard controls. Having said that, we want to caution you that if you were going to sort of fold these generic standards to deal with all sorts of noise impacts into this discussion that's before you about leaf blowers and other, I think the resolution says gas-operated equipment, I believe, some of these are more germane. For example, you, under D, utilizing quiet models of air compressors, compressors and other stationary noise sources where technology exists. And also, with regards to A, there are important exceptions if you were going to then reduce the time when leaf blowers could be used or even construction, if we went even further on this exercise. For example, I'm sort of wandering, wandering off the subject for a moment on leaf blowers and gas-operated equipment. But in terms of gas-operated equipment at construction sites, if you recall when we entitled to Good Earth to get going on the construction, we had a discussion about them working late in the evening, even though it was going to be summertime and when the sun's up late. And we devised a remedy by saying, "If three people complained, three independent source, I knew it after..." But it behooved the community at that time to keep the longer hours of construction going to get the project over. And then also, you recently entitled the creek bank restoration project, the Fair and Cell, and that has to take place during the dry period of the summer when the creek's not running, so you don't impact the wildlife and you can get this work done. So, there's another example, and that's actually through the gates already with the allowable construction time. And then finally, for small homeowners that are remodeling their homes or building new homes and whatnot, there are some situations where it's sort of a categorical imperative to get the work done. And then finally, there's, as we all learned through the public process and the beauty of the public process, you learn what you didn't know you didn't know. So, there might be other unforeseen circumstances that come along where we may not want to be prescriptive in the absolute sense about limiting the time of things. But we just wanted to call your attention to those very interesting aspects of the new noise element in the general plan. And I do invite you to go back and read that very comprehensive chapter because it does point out how difficult it is to deal with this in the increasingly noisy urban environment. And as we've seen in the last several months, between tonight, the earlier, the leaf blower, the 7-Eleven, we seem to be mired down in the quality of life vis-à-vis noise quite often. So, I invite you to go back and check that out. And then finally, with regards to tonight, Commissioner Coler, another thank you. You burdened... finally, with regards to tonight, Commissioner Kohler, another thank you. You bird dogged, so to speak, the piece that got in your packet late about Burlingame's Regulations of Leaf Blowers. And I actually don't have that in front of me, but it was a very concise approach. That's okay. I think Linda's pulling it out. And it's also a very nice flyer. It actually is pretty stringent in terms of one day a week in each zone, if you will, of the town of Burlingame. And with the exception that on the weekend, that's for commercial leaf blower operations, more or less during the week, one day per zone. So it sort of moves the noise around the town for only one day of impact. And then for residents, it's on the weekend, okay? But they also can take one of those days in their area during the week also. So anyway, they, they, again, I'll reiterate this, commercial blowers may be used only one day per week, per area, with an extra day for R3 and R4 buildings. Those are, you know, multifamily houses. And then they provide a map on where those are. Two, or second bullet, residents may use their own blowers on Saturdays from 9:00 to 2:00, and Sundays from 10:00 to 2:00, as well as on their assigned weekdays. And lastly, commercial blowers must display a sticker issued by the Department of Public Works certifying that machinery is 65 decibels or below, and please see the revised map for your day. There's also a process for certifying that equipment as low-decibel equipment. And the newer equipment is in that lower range that's coming out. And actually, somewhere else, I believe, it actually gave a list of the equipment. It was another link that you gave. They actually give the actual type of equipment. So aside from this new bit of information, I'm looking forward to your continued discussion tonight. And to back up, even though I wasn't here at the last meeting, I believe we sort of talked about the, the main issues of the noise, the, and I think this is true with the Air Quality Board, big lengthy report you received, it's the, the noise, it's the gas pollutants from the internal combustion equipment, and it's the particulates that you're lifting up and recirculating in the air and the impacts. Hopefully, we can get this a little earlier on the agenda. My guess is you're not going to make it to the finish line tonight. Hopefully, we can get this on the agenda a little earlier at the next meeting so that people in the public don't have to sit through three hours of whatever, or try to stay up so they can get down here for the discussion. Because, again, we want to get everybody to weigh in on this. I can report, I believe it's accurate, and please forgive me if it's not, but I believe with regards to the gentleman at Bennett House that started this discussion, I think they've reached a resolution at Bennett House with regards to leaf blowers on the site. So that's some good news, and I'll try to verify that between now and the next meeting because that kind of came in late. And we did notify Mr. Douglas Green again about the meeting tonight. But this is hard to sit through these things, particularly from folks that are elderly and are, you know, disabled and can't go across town in the middle of the night on our treacherous sidewalks particularly. So anyway, without further ado, it seems to me, if I could summarize, I think you should, you know, weigh into it for a few minutes tonight, give us some more of your thinking. It seems to me that, you know, somewhere along the line, you're going to probably settle on the type of equipment that's a no-brainer, lower in volume. You, you know, will obviously be considering seriously restricting the time in some fashion, perhaps. And there you go.
So I, I think it's important, we actually had a long discussion on this, and I want to make sure that it's clear to you what was discussed then, and to Commissioner Kohler because I think the rest of us were involved. There are two things. The town ordinances are all built around the sound at the reception point, the receiver sound at your property line. And this is the one thing that's being talked about that's at the generating point. And so that's a very different thing, and it, it sort of throws it out of being consistent with everything else we do in the town. I asked the question last time about do commercial businesses, do they have to get an operating license or a commercial license to operate within the town of Fairfax? And it doesn't, didn't sound like they do. So this idea of Burlingame, this was kind of what I was thinking, like, okay, if we have that process, you could, you could, you could control the commercial operations. And just from the brief look at this, it really is focused on the commercial operators, and it, it accommodates the homeowners. It doesn't require that their machine has to be 65 decibels, which, which would address some of that. But I, it didn't sound like the town had a process or, or the capacity to sort of take that on. And so I think that, that, that's kind of an open question. It doesn't mean that it couldn't be done in the future, but I think that's, that's one. And then the last one, and I think it was interesting that the leaf blower was added in 2008 to the noise ordinance 820-100, or 820-070. And all the discussions that you were mentioning around construction, the noise element was talking about construction. This is, this is sort of outside of construction. And so there are time limitations that are built in for leaf blowers, garden tools, all of those types of things within our existing ordinance. So the discussions that we had sort of recognized all of that, and maybe the reason why some of the items that were, are now therefore be resolved from the Town Council, some of them are open questions. It's a, it's an exemption from no noise or from, from the noise standard. So it's an allowance, is essentially what it is. And, and it allows those noises, you know, during daytime hours and weekends. And we could certainly talk about those times and whether they make sense. But some of the reason why maybe a lot of these, of the eight provisions in the Town Council resolution, a lot of those provisions are the idea of whether you are going to do something, if you're going to do something, here's a question, you know, is it going to be addressed in six months, things like that. We actually had a lot of discussion about its education and outreach, and where is the opportunity for that? And maybe it's through a internal permitting system, and maybe it's something else that we could do for educating people that, you know, there's a need and a use for leaf blowers, but there's also a problem. And how do we make sure that the problem is addressed? And is education and outreach? And how do we make those contacts? So those are a lot of the things that were discussed during our last meeting. And I think just trying to make sure that I didn't get that you got all that through, through your response, so. Thanks.
I just, so I want to bring up one point. By sending the City of Burlingame link to Linda and Jim, I didn't want to imply that I was supportive of something as, like this. This is too detailed, and it's too restrictive, in my opinion. But what I was really getting at was the second part of this, because unfortunately, from what I get, is leaf blowers do not have a handy-dandy sticker on them that says what the decibel level is.
And what does anything else say?
So in order to, thinking about the idea of enforcement, should we want to do that? That puts a huge problem on the police to be walking around with a sound level meter, and they've got other things to do. Or Mark, who I guess is code enforcement. So I was, I was just sort of hunting around for, I was actually looking for something else, and I found this. And I thought, well, I don't, these, these times are way too restrictive. I would never propose anything like that. But what I liked about it was, it was kind of a handy-dandy, short, educational pamphlet on what theirs is. Theirs is really complicated. And if we were to, to go for something where we said between, you know, 8:00 and 5:00, and 9:00 to 4:00 on Saturdays, which gives people a lot of time to get it done, and then where you wanted to grant exceptions, then maybe you could grant, you could require a permit for those. So something like that. I'm not, I'm just throwing that out there. But I also think, the other problem is the commercial leaf blowers are typically the gas ones, the ones that residential people own usually are the electric ones, which aren't as loud, they're not used as much, blah, blah, blah. So, and you don't have the exhaust and all that kind of stuff. So I think if we were going to take something like this on, I think, being cognizant of typical hours where people would get this done, not disturbing their neighbors, so don't start at 5:00, maybe 4:00. But, you know, maybe something within the constraints of what we see, 8:00 to 5:00, 9:00 to 4:00. And then also allowing exceptions through a permit. And then ultimately trying to figure something about if we decide to restrict decibel levels, try to find an easy way out so that it, it doesn't become something restrictive. Or on the other hand, we could have it more of a self-enforcing sort of thing, where people knew that they had to have something 65 or 70 decibels or less, and that's what they went out to get. I did a little hunting to see how easy it was to find out what the decibel level was by looking online and looking at SPACs. And unfortunately, my 15 minutes didn't yield that information, but you probably know about this.
I do, and I'm glad you asked because it's just. I was just up getting my weed whacker fixed and at Buck's. And they're in Novato, and they sell leaf blowers. And I thought, well, cool, you know, there's a giant leaf blower, and there's a medium-sized leaf blower, and there's a little tiny leaf blower, and there's, I mean, so many different ones. Every single tag that hangs on it that has the price on it also has the decibel level on it. So you can get one that's 75, or you can get one that's 65 or 55. What it also tells you, and these are the new ones that are equipped for issues like this because it comes up around the country, and it's not uncommon. It also tells you, some of them, the better, what seemed to be better quality ones, said something about this decibel level at this many feet, and this decibel level at that many feet. So that, that information is available from these manufacturers. With that said, those were the kind of expensive, commercial-grade backpack gas blowers. So I don't know what's available for, you know, at Home, at Home Depot or something. This was a small-engine place, and that's what they sold. But that was what I learned when I was there. That information is available.
I think I wanted to just continue our discussion last month, which is pulling back at the broader issue of do we even need a leaf blower ordinance? And why did this come about? And was it environmental concerns, or noise concerns, or carbon footprint concerns? I think the noise concern is valid. I don't think there's really data to support the environmental concerns or the carbon footprint in sort of making a difference in putting in an ordinance for that reason. And yet, when we look at our town code between hours of operation and decibel levels, and our exemption for leaf blowers, I don't think we need a whole lot of tweaking. And I guess my recommendation is making a big thing out of something that's relatively small, that's something that we already have in place to tweak, instead of coming up with something very complicated and dedicated. And then again, we get into the issues of weed whackers, well, they're not in here, and the leaf blowers, and the hedge trimmers, and everything else. So I think we're opening up a can of worms. And I think what we do, we do relatively well already in place.
And I'd like to reiterate that. That's, what I was trying to say is, if we regulate decibels for a leaf blower, then we need to regulate decibels for every other item that's being used. And the standard that we have is the receiving sound level. It's the impact of the sound on the receiver, and that's measured to the property line. And while that's not perfect, I think in, in the long term, that's a lot more workable from, from the town's perspective. You know, so I think that really, and I agree, it's, it's hours of operation. I think we have to be, I mean, we have to allow people on weekends who work all week to have both days. I would have a lot of problem with just Saturday in terms of operation. I think if there is a concern, and this was expressed at the last meeting as well, as a neighbor, I mean, I don't want to blow dust either because it's going in my house, too. So, but it's, it's how do we reach the commercial operators? And I, that's what I do take from this Burlingame example, is it's, maybe there is something we can do for anybody who's coming into town and just doing the landscaping, that, that they can be aware of that. And maybe it's not a punitive thing, but it's an education and outreach thing. And, you know, we don't want things, we don't want the grass cuttings being blown into the gutters and down the drains either. You know, there's a lot of things that kind of go into that, what the blower's doing. So, so education, outreach, and, and we actually have a lot to work with with minor tweaks.
I think the, the environmental concerns are unenforceable. The, and if you read this whole report, you know, establishing, I mean, it seems like there's a difference between the danger to the operator from inhaling the fumes or the dust or what have you, and then there's some evidence that in general, there might be some problem to the general public. But to me, the way to get to this is through the hours of operation. And I think in terms of quality of life, if I'm, you know, living in Fairfax, I certainly want to have my evening time after a hard day at work, and I want to have my weekends. So my, my thought is to restrict commercial operation to Monday through Friday, and have no commercial operation at all on the weekends, make it available Saturday and Sunday. Homeowners can work on their, their own houses, on their own property. And this may be too broad a brush to handle it with, but you might be able to apply that to all noise generating equipment. I also think that the hours that are in the town code are, are far too liberal. And they're 7:00 to 10:00 p.m.? 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.? No, I think it should be 8:00 o'clock to 5:00 o'clock. And so that's kind of the way I, the way I feel about it. And that should apply to not only leaf blowers, but weed eaters and construction compressors and all that kind of thing. I think from 8:00 to 5:00, you can go ahead and make a lot of noise during the week, but not before 8:00, not after 5:00, and not on the weekends. Seems to be probably the simplest and most enforceable way to go about it.
I feel I have to speak for Shelley, who isn't here, because she made the point that, you know, she's busy during the week, and if the commercial landscapers couldn't work on Saturdays, she would prefer to be at home watching her commercial landscaper. So she just questioned whether banning the commercial landscapers on the weekends is really the right thing to do. She would want to be at home watching her commercial landscaper on the weekend.
Well, and, and I would, I would say that I think there are people who would want to do that. And also, there are commercial landscapers who probably have a lot of big jobs during the week, and then they might have some what are called mow-and-blow operations that they want to do on Saturday. And so while I am in agreement with Morgan as far as, I think the hours that are here, the 8:00 to 8:00 and 9:00 to 8:00 are, are too long. But I think we could probably do something simple, rather than some big protracted just leaf blower ordinance. We might want to add an E or something to these exemptions. And for commercial, maybe we add Saturday, 9:00 to 4:00, which is consistent with those general standards. Allow residential, no later than 5:00. Well, you know, I don't, I don't know. I guess there are residential, maybe we want to let residential people do it whenever. But I sort of think it would be just simpler to just keep it all the same. Unless we wanted to say, and residential homeowners could also do it on Sunday, because there are people that work Saturdays. And if we kept away from the decibel level, it sure would be a lot easier to enforce, with the hope being that most of the commercial operations, who are really the noisy ones, are not going to be working with a lot of old equipment. They're going to be replacing their equipment versus a homeowner who's going to keep something for years and years. And so my hope is the newer equipment is lower decibels, because they are going to have to change out. So that if we just stay away from that aspect of it and just keep it simple with something like the limit on time, squeezing it down, I personally would vote for, let's just do it for leaf blowers and not extend it to everything in this, these other things for now. And see, you know, if that's going to work for the town overall, and allow people, people enough And see, you know, if that's going to work for the town overall and allow people enough flexibility to do what they need to do. But not try to prescribe some whole big leaf blower ordinance like all these other places have done. And Burlingame's is so complicated, they probably had to do this flyer because nobody understood it. And I think if you, I mean, even though I think it's laudable the way they did it, I think one day per week. And I know I was sitting at the Capitol 10 years ago when an entire leaf blower ban came up for the entire state. And that was a very long committee meeting. And people were trucked in that were going to lose business. And then there was the other side of people who hate them. And it died. It's never been taken up again. And I suspect this CARB report, which is very out of date, which was like 13 years ago, it doesn't even show that there's a PM 2.5 standard for fine particulate matter. That's, the litigation's over. It's there. I suspect that that was kind of the precursor to that proposed legislation that died. But I think we could do something small, and I guess from what I've heard, we don't have a lot of complaints about leaf blowers in Fairfax. Bennett House kind of brought this issue up, but I'm sure there are other complaints. But I don't see as many of these kind of folks around that you see in some of the bigger areas.
Yeah, this is about the third time it's come up in the last two times.
But...
It's about the third time it's come up in the last two times. First time, the town decided not to do anything. Second time is when they added it to that section of the noise ordinance. So the reaction hasn't, there hasn't seemed to have been an overreaction because we don't get that many complaints.
I know that having been a contractor, anybody in construction is aware of the fact that every community has hours of operation that are allowed. And that's basic to the industry. And it's not, it's not necessarily the same hours in each community. And to me, that's sort of the structure within which we might establish these time limits. Now, if there's, I think that any commercial operation that has to schedule time on the weekend is, you know, they get more staff, they get more people. They don't have to work on Saturday or Sunday. And if they do, we maybe restrict the hours, but not 9:00 to 4:00 on Saturday. You know, if they want to come in, they can go, you know, and work between, you know, 10:00 and 3:00. But I don't, I don't think there's a need to accommodate the commercial operators that much on the weekend. And I would say too, there are some construction companies that maybe are used to different hours, and it, you know, maybe there's a process through which they could get a permit to operate special hours, like the driveway that's going in over at 62 Valley. Those people get started at 7:00 in the morning. And they're, you know, that's Majory and Gelati or whomever. So, you know, some people are used to certain things. I think that if they don't want to adhere to the standard hours that the town dictates, they can apply for permission to do that, and that's about it, though. I think, I think it's the simplest way to go about it.
I think the one thing I would just say is that the commercial operations, I mean, I have a friend who has a landscape business, and some of these people are really hanging by a thread. So I just think 9:00 to 4:00 is reasonable if we're going to go there at all. I don't think we're talking about multimillion-dollar commercial operations. There probably are some that are in Fairfax. But got to realize, a lot of these are really small businesses, and I really would like to allow a homeowner who maybe works a lot and feels like they, they don't want to just have somebody there when they're not there without disturbing the neighbors. And so maybe we don't have Sundays. But I just really also want to consider the small business operators that are probably hanging by a thread and living in our town, trying to do business in this town.
I think it's, you know, the last thing is if we don't have a process by which commercial businesses come into the town and have to have a permit to operate in the town, then how are we defining commercial? That, I mean, what's commercial? Is it somebody you hired for the day? Is it corporate? I mean, so we don't have that right now. This town doesn't have it. So until we have it, I don't think we can really be talking about commercial because then you're just getting into, well, what's the definition? And I don't think we could pull that off. So if the town has a permitting process for businesses that operate in the town, I think we, there's an opportunity. But if it doesn't, I think it's very problematic to go there. So let's leave it there. Do you feel like you have enough, Mr. Moore?
I think so. I was just rereading the resolution and looking at the 1 through 8 as sort of a checklist. And then I was thinking about what you're all saying. I think if your game, I could, we could craft a first cut at this for your next meeting.
And you're hearing that it would be an amendment to 820070?
Yes, yes. Yeah. And I think, I think I've got enough direction. At least it would be a template, and then you can massage, you know, come to an agreement or however many you'll need to make that determination. So I'll take a cut at it.
Thank you.
Great.
Talk about another item?
Yeah, let's see, it's on the, this, number six, if you're ready, Mr. and Madam Chair.
Does the public get a chance?
Oh, forgive me, public comment.
Public comment.
Discussion item.
Mr. Public.
We're still on leaf blowers, I guess, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah. Discussion item.
Three minutes.
The public.
Question item.
The public.
I'm curious, Chris Land Canyon Road.
Hit the button.
I'm curious, does any of the...
No, Chris, hit the button.
Chris Land Canyon Road. I'm curious, does any of the commissioners have attachment from the March meeting of a handwritten letter I wrote four months ago when Mayor Hartwell-Horero asked me to weigh in on blower regulations?
We had it, we had it on the last, at the last meeting.
Evidently.
It was part of the March 2015.
Any of you happen to have it handy? Because I'm curious, but point being...
I do know that you had 82070 included with an asterisk on it.
Ah, yeah. What the point was, this current noise ordinance specifically excludes all gas-powered landscaping tools during the week from the noise ordinance. And it would be very simple to simply remove that word excluded, which is a very small change that would require all gas-powered tools be fall under the noise ordinance. And part of the letter that I wrote months ago was that modern equipment is getting quieter and quieter. We know that. I got my backpack blower at Home Depot. It was an Echo. It's actually a handheld unit on a backpack frame, and it's a gas-powered. And whenever I use it, people say, wow, I didn't know this could be so quiet. And the only reason is because I keep it throttled down low. And the guys at the store laughed at my blower. They said it wasn't strong enough, but it's plenty strong. So I think the issue about noise is important and is the key reason for any more regulation. The second thing is fumes, exhausts from the engines themselves. And that's a problem for the operators like me. So right now, they have new carburation systems with CARB. And also, we have biofuels. We have the two-stroke, all these things run on two-stroke gasoline, which means you add oil to it to lubricate the engine itself instead of having an oil reservoir. And now they have biodegradable two-stroke oil they add. It smells like popcorn. And so it's definitely less carcinogenic than the old ways, when you can't even smell it. You sure can't see much smoke. So point being, and I think the third point was about particulate matter dust. Well, it's true. You could make just as much dust with a broom. And electric blowers, which are a lot shriller and, in my opinion, noisier than a low-rev-operated gas blower because there's no control on electric motor. It's either fast or slow. And either way, it's a whine. I could be down at my house, back in the end of the canyon with the huge trees constantly dropping stuff, and some homeowner across the canyon will fire up one of those things in the morning. It's like, whee! You know, you couldn't really hear it. When I'm walking around with my gas-powered blower, keeping it at low rev, it's like, I barely need ear protection, and it's old. So, and also want to make a point now, Commissioner Kuhler's point about small businesses hanging by a thread. I know most of the landscapers in town because I've lived here, you know, 40 years, whatever, whatever it is. And the people who are causing the problem are two guys in a truck from outside Fairfax. And if you recall, the letter that I wrote stated emphatically that any commercial operation has to be licensed by the town of Fairfax. That's the rule, just like any door-to-door solicitor, has to be licensed by the town. And if these two guys show up in a pickup truck, moonlighting from their weekly job, that's not some local business hanging by a thread. Those guys are poachers. They're poaching on my turf. I get a business license, I get a contractor's license, I got to have insurance, all that stuff. My business is hanging by a thread because of those guys. Simple as that. And they're the ones who aren't trained, who aren't licensed by the town or the state. And those are the guys, I feel, in my expert opinion, they're causing a problem because they run a blower full blast when you don't need to, which is stated in the letter there. So to wrap up, there's a lot of commercial property in town that use gas-powered blowers, like Fair and Selma, Plaza, Rich Hall, Goodher, that area, they use a gas-powered blower. It's a handheld, some little guys out there using it. We use them over at Fairfax Lumber, First Federal Savings and Loan, Bennett House. There's lots of commercial properties in town where people use gas-powered blowers. And almost all of them are quiet. There's not any problems from that. It's the unlicensed people come in and run a full blast. So let's see, 65 decibels, most issue, air quality. Oh, yeah, even the air quality control report that I skimmed briefly notes that the emissions from blowers are steadily decreasing over the decade they've been measured. So I think we don't need to worry too much about that. I think the main issue here really is fairness. Fairness to the neighbors who are impacted, fairness to the licensed workers who are getting undercut by unlicensed workers, and fairness to the, to the people that need gas-powered leaf blowers. At my house, I've got these humongous oak trees. They're deciduous. They're always dropping dead stuff, and it's constant dust and dirt and leaves and garbage. The birds, it's like, and then tracks in the house if it's wet. And I, so I maintain my, I untuck all my decks, my driveway, the street, and my neighbor's driveways, just because otherwise you'd slip and fall. We all have steep driveways, and it's not allowed to hose them down anymore. That's illegal. My neighbor and I used to stand up front every Friday night, hose down our driveways, make it nice and clean. No dust, no noise. That's been outlawed. When I was a kid in Belvedere, we cleaned, I had a concrete staircase that went all the way from one street to the other. My mom says, clean that staircase. So I'd fill up a garbage can full of water at the top, dip it over. My sister was spotting down below. Whew, staircase clean. So, which is the story.
All right.
I think we've got all the points covered.
Yeah, I think we're good.
I think we're good. But I think Morgan has a good idea. I mean, everything you guys have said has been good. I haven't heard anything I truly disagree with at all. And I think what Morgan said about less commercial use on the weekends is that's a valid point. And I think that hours and the noise ordinance are too lenient. 7:00 a.m. to whatever it is. I mean, that's, that's something that should be looked at. And I think on the noise ordinance, all you'd have to do is just change that one little thing that exempts all those tools, not singling out leaf blowers, but all of them. And then the final point, yeah, now I remember. The actual decibel measurements. The police department have a decibel meter. I tried to set up a test. They said it wasn't working. They wouldn't give it to me, whatever. Point being that if you're actually going to care about decibels, you have to have enforcement technical know-how and muscle and availability to back it up. And so that might be worth staff checking to see if the police department does have it together with a decibel meter. Because we get complaints from the bar, movie theater, I mean, there's stuff that goes on here where the decibel meter is actually needed sometimes. So I think that wraps it up for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with that.
All right.
Take care.
Commissioner Hall.
Close the public hall.
Yeah, we'll close the... I just, you know, I think the ordinance ought to be directed at anything, anything that makes noise. And we could, I mean, we could stipulate that any equipment making noise in the, you know, after the approved hours should be, you know, less than 65 decibels, possibly. So that's, that's one thought. But limiting it to gas-powered machines is, I think it should be everything, like, you know, compressors, nail gun compressors for construction sites and, you know, power saws. There's a lot of things that make noise that aren't gas-powered. I mean, if I were, if I were six foot six, I'd go after these guys, other Harley-Davidsons to go ripping around after hours. I mean, it's just really obnoxious. So it's almost about anything that makes noise and affects the quality of life here in Fairfax.
That's in fact how the resolution's written, other power equipment. And number five on the checklist says whether or not to include both leaf blowers and other power equipment in the regulations. So I'll have that checklist filled in, and you can tweak it.
Thank you. We got to do the such-as-us. Now we have civic engagement...
Can I make a recommendation on item six? I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Civic engagement through digital information tools.
Yeah, that was really Chair Shelley Hamilton's item, so I suggest you table it till she's back with us and recovering from her recent challenge, health challenge.
Now, what did you read? Your report?
I'm sorry?
Your report.
Planning Director's Report.
Oh, you guys, I thought it was after Commissioners' comments and requests.
Oh, does, do any commissioners have comments or requests? Our request is for the Planning Director's Report.
I'll be really brief, because if it goes past 11, I have to buy Linda lunch.
Yeah, the decibel requirement is buying lunch.
That was our deal. She wouldn't bet with me. She wouldn't, she wouldn't...
Wait, okay, but wait, it has to be if I'm still in this building after 11, turning off the coffee clock.
Okay, I'm going to be even shorter, quicker. I'm going to be quicker. I should buy her lunch anyway, so maybe I'll go real slow.
Talk real slow.
No. So, look, I'm going to be real brief. As you know, our planning shop, Planning and Building Services, you know, is, we run at a fast pace. There's just the three of us. We don't even have admin. We have a lot on our plate, you know. We finished the general plan, yeah, but we are trying to update the zoning ordinance. We're dealing with the drafting of the Climate Action Plan with the General Plan Implementation Committee, among all the other priorities in implementing the general plan. We are now on full throttle with Larry Kennings and Associates brought on, I mentioned to you, as subconsultant, to add narrative to the housing element so that we can re-approach HCD for certification. Heads up, I mentioned to the G-PIC in this room last week, and I mentioned to you, just for your record, that we will probably take those amendments, recommended amendments to the housing element, to a joint meeting of the Affordable Housing Committee and the G-PIC before we take it straight up to council to get that, those changes approved. And we will be hopefully getting HCD's heads up that they're happy with what we take up, and then we'd send it back in, and hopefully we get the stamp. And we've got $300,000 of parcade improvements on the line. We don't get them unless we have a state-certified housing element. So between implementing the general plan, the zoning ordinance update, the Climate Action Plan drafting at G-PIC, the amendments to the housing element, our day-to-day activities with processing permits that you all deal with, our building officials' activities with approving building plans, code enforcement, which actually Linda's involved with, also no admin. We are a busy department. We work very, very hard. And I apologize that sometimes little, as they say in Hawaii, pukas, little holes in the program show up. We miss some things sometimes, but we try our best, and we run at a very fast pace. And so that be my report tonight, in addition to what an honor it is to staff you all, as always. And to work with this lady.
Yes, we appreciate it, too. We ask tough questions because we know you know all the answers. All right.
We have a new candidate for the Planning Commission, but he has also tried to join the council before.
We have to make sure we get him out.
So we're all on duty.
He's always in here.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all. Good job.